All right, good morning and welcome to Board of Commissioners meeting, March 2nd, 2022. Please stand and call this meeting to order and we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Thank you for being here. Your dedication and commitment to Curry County is unsurpassed. Chris has asked for a couple of seconds and then Court has asked for, just kind of prior to the amendment and approval of the agenda, so.
I just want to give my thanks to everyone who contacted my wife Bonnie or I through emails, texts, cards and letters. They were much appreciated. I am doing better. Doctors are monitoring me and they say I am moving forward. So I just, I really appreciated the outreach and all the letters and kind words people wrote and said about me, so thank you very much.
All right, Court?
Chair Herzog, I think we were both thinking.
That tile is slippery.
I have a slippery tile. I think we were both thinking the same thing this morning, kind of a renewed interest in reporting what is going on with our police in the United States of America. And then I wanted to mention the Ukraine, they're at a death toll now of almost 600. Most of those are women and children. And I was just going to ask the Board if we could have 20 seconds or so, moment of silence.
Yep. All right, thank you. Thank you for that and Chris, obviously God is not finished with you yet, you're still here and I'm surprised, I thought, I didn't think we'd see him today, so good job. Because I don't know what that's like and I don't want to know what that's like, right? It's something you don't want, so I kind of asked him a few questions, what do you, what was it like at the beginning, anyway, so that's just, that's, because I'm getting that age. So now is the time for amendment slash approval of the agenda, so we have some things to amend and approve. And right off the bat, I have 6C, we're going to pull Wildlands Firefighting Training Center, David Barnes. We have discussed that with the appropriate people, Dyson Krieger, Dave, do you want to speak?
I do, yeah, I, like you just said, we've, I've spoken to appropriate people about this, my concerns have been alleviated. One thing that is going to have to come up though, either today or at the next meeting, is we do need a reliable point of contact with the county.
Yep.
That's something that we haven't, that we did not have on this and it caused a lot of issues and a lot of problems. You know, being a contact person is more than just a vanity thing, there's work that's involved with it. And the ball got dropped this time and we need somebody more reliable who can get the word out to the right people to make sure that things happen in a timely manner.
We are on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
May I ask a question there? You said more reliable and caused a lot of problems, could you elaborate on that?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna elaborate on anything.
So is that, do we need a vote on that, Mr. Chair?
No, we're gonna, it's, 6C is polled and it's, it's polled, so no more, there's...
I will agree with that because there is supposed to be an agreement of the Board to do that.
There has to be, yeah.
So you don't want to discuss anymore before the public, neither one of you?
Well, I think we may be bringing it back further.
I don't thi-
This is something that, that our treasurer put in that he's now withdrawn, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, but your name wasn't involved in?
Not at all, not that I've never spoken to anybody about it.
I'll be anxiously awaiting the future comments on that, thank you.
And then Anthony, you had, we had a change in executive session.
That's correct, yeah, we're gonna move, our request that we remove, move Agenda Item 8A from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay, everybody got that? And then I would open it up to...
I have no changes, sir.
Okay, Court?
Likewise, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right.
I move we approve the amend, the agenda as amended. I'll second, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes here.
Motion carries three to zero. At this time, we'll have public comments, three minutes per person. There's not very many this morning. And then just beware of the red light, green light, amber light on the podium. So the first up is Beth Barker Hidalgo.
Good morning, Commissioners, Beth Barker Hidalgo, Executive Director of the Curry Homeless Coalition/Southern Oregon Coast Resource Center. We're still in transition there. I just wanted to come this morning and let you know that we have the Community Organizations Active in Disaster, Curry County Coad.
With that mask, it's really-
I'm sorry, I'm not taking it off, I'll speak up, thank you.
Yeah, because it's really muffled.
Yep, the Curry County Community Organizations Active in Disaster has purchased a shipping container for Brookings Harbor Food Bank to increase their capacity to store dry goods and shelf life, long shelf life food. If you recall, I was here before, I mentioned the after-action report from the Cheko Bar Fire, this was called out as a deficiency, as we did not have the capacity to store incoming donations from Walmart, Fred Meyer Grocery Outlet. And so we are working, we are taking steps to increase the capacity of the food bank to be able to store incoming donations should we have another disaster that requires us to, to be able to take in those donations and then disperse them out to community members in need. And then I didn't realize this Agenda Item was on this agenda and so I would have put it on my public comment, but I do want to, I'm a little bit concerned about Item 6D. It was brought to my attention just before I left to come to this meeting, that our treasurer is misinterpreting the use of our funds when it comes to homelessness and housing. So as far as administering those funds, I want to make sure that somebody is involved in that process who has a comprehensive understanding of what those funds can be used for. I know we've got additional funds coming in the spring and that'll be, that'll, you know, result in another distribution, so I just want to make sure that whoever within the county is going to have their hands on this art money and decide where it's going to go, that everyone have a comprehensive understanding of what funds can be spent on and whether or not those funds jeopardize any other funding in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Barker Hidalgo, I have a question for you, please. You've had some success in grants, so you are experienced, fair enough?
Uh huh.
Thank you. There was a, there was a reference, and I think the public needs to know, there was a reference to a grant in Item 6B, if I have my information correct, that there was a mystery grant, is that you that the public didn't know about or something?
No, I have no grant with the county at this time.
Okay, so you're not using those numbers?
We have our own EIN, Dunst's number, we don't have a SAM number, but we have a Dunst's number and an EIN that we use for our grant applications.
I just needed that clarification, thank you very much.
Sure.
Next up is Connie Hunter. You can get her autograph maybe later, she was on the front page of the Brookings Harbor Pilot for award, duly, duly-
And the Curry County Reporter, so thank you all for that. Good press, sometimes I don't get good press. So that's a balancer for me. I'm Connie Hunter and I'm a proud citizen of Curry County and I wanted to talk a little bit today about housing. When the Housing Committee was formed, I reached out to Alex Campbell, Regional Solutions, for administrative assistance with potential housing projects. He explained to me that he was too busy helping to create housing for replacing structures destroyed by wildfires last summer. I responded with a very pointed email, "We need funding, we need administrative support." And some concerns were expressed in that same email regarding entities that could be doing more, some suggesting they had no capacity or interest to do more, and I'm speaking about regional level entities. So a recent priority of mine was to participate in the state-level Legislative Committee meeting regarding housing. The state's staff provided an interim report to the Oregon House of Representatives Committee on Housing. The interim report addressed where the holes are and the concerns are that exist at the local level and solutions-oriented perspective regarding affordable housing, affordable workforce housing and workforce housing, beginning with defining the roles of the state, regional entities and municipalities. In that discussion, they didn't even talk about the counties. They themselves, staff and state, House of Representative Committee on Housing acknowledged that local counties find it nearly impossible to create affordable workforce housing in spite of the need. It's more difficult in rural areas. This rural area conundrum was created by disparity at the state level and this was acknowledged along with suggesting that the lack of housing exists because of that disparity and the state created that. To course correct, the state acknowledged these shortcomings and have developed and are continuing to develop strategies to provide for the elements of success in solving the statewide housing crisis even in rural areas. The first element of success will be to provide the necessary funding, the second element will be administrative support for capacity building at the local level, and the third element of success will be accountability. Where does the state, whereas the state recognizes the need for accountability, it's good to note that they'll look at places like the housing authorities, are they doing their job in convening stakeholders groups? And our local housing authority hasn't had that capacity. There was no indicator in the interim report that suggested that counties were expected to do anything except what they are already doing. Counties participating in regional efforts are doing a great job and providing more development efforts by convening local stakeholders. By the way, that's exactly where we ended up at our last committee, Housing Committee meeting, time to convene and assist various stakeholders groups. One stakeholders group that I suggest is an industry ally stakeholders group, thank you.
Thank you. Brett Cecil?
Good morning, Commissioners, it's good to see you all today. I'm pleased to see and recognize that President Biden is making available oral anti-COVID medications to anyone who results a positive COVID test. More care, more choice and more freedom to protect oneself from this insidious virus. Please remain on guard though, as we have not eliminated the sickness from amongst us, but we have the tools and the knowledge to alleviate the need for intense hospitalization and more importantly, loss of life associated with this illness. This week, Mr. Gordon Clay has provided you with a very detailed and important report revealing that we are not out of the clear in Curry County, having reported nearly 400 cases during the month of February and scoring the highest per capita death rate of the 36 Oregon counties during the calendar year of 2021. Testing, vaccinating and medicating are available to us, allowing avoidance of illness and death, but this all requires that the citizenry be educated as to the availability as well as the when and where of these services. I wish to recognize and thank the BOC for making this information available on the landing page of the county website at co.curry.or.us. I urge all at the sound of my voice to exercise your rights and freedom by visiting the county website and informing yourself on these details. A little bit more, I'd like to speak about housing. Recently, my attention has been turned to the issue of housing in our county. At the last BOC meeting, the issue of three shovel-ready projects was presented and either $250,000 or $500,000 of ARP funds were committed to these projects. Curious as I tend to be, I turned to the county planning department to review the details of these projects. The following is the response that I received. The three projects referred to by Commissioner Pash at the BOC meetings are all real projects. Two of the three projects have significant involvement from private parties. These entities have desired to keep their information confidential for now, so the county is not at liberty to disclose information about them. Information about the third project, a county-owned project, has been closed at numerous, disclosed at numerous BOC meetings. A conceptual plan has been developed, the property has been surveyed and a brief write-up of the project was presented at the BOC meeting on January 19th. For anyone as curious as I that wishes to review these details, I believe that they were Action Items 7H and 7I on that day's agenda. My position today is that of asking, how and why is the county committing such vast amounts of ARP dollars to projects by undisclosed private parties? I ask, should the public not be aware of the details of these projects before any public money, especially American Rescue Plan dollars, is committed to said projects? This feels like a backroom secret negotiation-style stuff that may derogatorily impact and legally expose Curry County. I ask that BOC give a closer look at quickly sharing the details of these projects with the public as to alleviate any appearance of impropriety, transparency is the best policy. I'm available, available to answer your questions and I wanted to say thank you to you for allowing me to speak every week when I come in here.
Lori Van Zant?
I have a comment, Ms. Van Zant, before you step up. I just want to give some clarity to what's happening.
Please.
This Board is united in our housing problems and we are working diligently toward that. Getting to the question that was asked to Ms. Crockett, these landowners do not want their name involved until we have something that's viable. We are in constant meetings with these people to make it viable. No funds will be released from the county ARP of any kind until we have contractual obligations and at that time, it will be fully transparent with the county on exactly what's happening. But these are living wage and low-income veterans' housing residences in South, North and Central County and it will total, my estimation will be over 200 units. So this is a huge thing for Curry County. It is something that is needed, these will be apartments, these will be, again, living wage jobs, places. And there are some people that are willing to step up to do this, willing to get involved and I think they, what they're going to give to this county is huge and I applaud them for it and I am, I'm glad to be involved in it and I am certain the citizens of this county, once we make all the information known, will be 100% behind it as well. Again, I will say not one dollar will be released until it is under contract embedded.
Lori, now it's your turn.
Sorry, Lori.
No problemo.
Thought it was a good, good time, just a good.
I need a disclaimer that I didn't think I was going to speak today, so it's going to be a little jarbled, but I'm going to try. I had a wonderful talk yesterday with John and he's a great listener and very protective of counting COVID funds and I appreciate that. I think the first issue at hand is whether or not our ask for doing a feasibility study for underground power fits within the guidelines of COVID, COVID money expenditures. So on January the 6th, the U.S. Treasury came out with their final rule. And in that final rule, which you can see at the U.S. Department of Treasury online, it states four categories that they will fund. Number one, anything with economic impact. Number two, repaying workers. Number three, anything involving lost revenue because of COVID. And number four, infrastructure. So the National Association of Main Streets has a representative that met with the federal government to completely clarify and define what is legit for expenditures of these monies. And so we can see recently that they've defined it, $700,000 just went to McVenville, urban renewal dollars put in, $500,000. So streetscapes and infrastructure, like you see in Brookings with the new facades, it's happening everywhere with COVID money. This is what recovery means. Are you an inviting place to stop? Do you want to open a business here? Do you want to move here? All of this matters and so that's where our philosophy is as Main Street. With that said, I feel, and a lot of us do, the middle class in this town is about evaporated. We don't have the housing, we don't have the jobs, we, go down Main Street and look at all the empty buildings. What's happening here? I mean, we even had a discussion about a couple of years ago, we didn't have enough people for the football team. Go look at the high school parking lot. We're kidding ourselves if we don't think we're in a downturn economically. What are we going to do to bring it back? Well, we work together, we start taking care of the most needy, we start providing housing and we start making our town an inviting place on Main Street. As Chris and I said, what if you hadn't widened sidewalks and you had cafes right out on Main Street? I mean, all of you have got great vision and ideas, but you know, for, we asked for 30, now we're talking to ask for 25, that's the final ask. At that point, we're ready to go to Marie Smith and get the feasibility study done, work with Richard Christensen, work with the Chief of Police, work with everybody in this town, come together, county and city, to get a master plan and get it executed. Wyden's, Wyden's got a $10 billion bill sitting right there for us to ask on. I mean, so now's the time. The county has to decide, you're our last stop. Do you want to fund this? If you do, we're all in, we're working tirelessly, our whole Board and volunteers. So please have that wider vision, that this is economic recovery and it will help. Imagine an entire mile-long stretch of lampposts and banners and flowers, imagine all ADA-compliant sidewalks, which we don't have now, which will involve ODOT, they'll come in, they'll be a good investor in this project too. So we've got a lot on the table here and we're really asking for your support, so thank you.
Lori, real quick, you mentioned seed money, the, say again what the grant, what the ARP money that the Main Street organization is asking for, that is for, repeat again if you would, please.
They're all about Main Street economic recovery. Anything applying to safety, applying to being inviting, is being spent.
But the county's help is going to...
Help us do a feasibility study so that we have something concrete to go after all the infrastructure bills that are out there right now in the billions.
That's what I needed, thank you very much.
25K right now with...
25K and we're ready to roll.
Meet there.
Your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, so moving on, presentation time. I see Sheriff Ward out there and Jared Gray, come on in.
Freeman.
Come in, come in.
Morning, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Sheriff Ward, Curry County Sheriff's Office. Today, we're here to celebrate some years of service for two of my men, both named Jared.
Okay.
They sound the same, but they're not spelled the same, you know what I mean? So, no relation. Anyway, we're going to start with Jared Freeman, he, he went to work for Justine County 15 years ago, he'd been there for five years before he moved over to Brookings, spent five years in Brookings and then he moved up to us, now he's got five years, so I hope that it's not a pattern when we talked about that. But Jared's my, when we hired him on patrol, I saw the value of moving him into a detective position, so he's my only detective by bab at this point. Does a wonderful job, I hope we can keep him around for another 15 years, so I'd like to present him with a plaque for his five years of service in Curry County.
All right. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks. Okay, next we have Deputy Jared Gray. He went to work for us 15 years ago, basically, started out as in the Marine Patrol, was contracting with them and went into corrections and then moved over into patrol, road patrol. Worked road patrol for quite a while and then I moved him into forest position. He grew up in this area, he knows every inch of this square, square inch of this county, he knows how to get to where we need to go, when he needs to go, and he does a great job on his communications with all our timber contracts. I think we have nine or 10 private timber companies that we contract with services along with the U.S. Forest Service. I want to give him a plaque for his 15 years of service in Curry County.
All right.
About even a little bit.
Thank you, Jared, you want to say something?
Thank you.
Okay, Jared.
Thank you, Curry County is what I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah.
And thank you for giving us this time to make those presentations.
Perfect.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next up is Brad-
Mr. Chair, he's a second cousin, I just got to mention that.
Okay.
He's one of 101-
Second cousins, yeah.
Grandkids, yeah.
Monthly Financial Review, Brad Rickett, Finance Director.
Is working on it?
I think so.
Doesn't seem to be.
Might need a battery.
Uh oh.
Eric?
Double As?
Man, when are we going to get this thing updated? Mouse doesn't seem to be...
The mouse doesn't seem to be mouthing.
There we go. Maybe I had to push a button first to activate.
It was sleeping.
Sleeping.
Thanks, Eric.
Top right says finance.
Okay, so...
Now we get to the exciting stuff.
Yeah, this is real exciting. Counting, it's always the exciting thing. So I wanted to go through just our financials again and give you an update on where we're at. Typically, I've been kind of focusing on expenses and payroll, general expenses and payroll expenses. This time, I want to also include a quick report on, on, on some of our revenues and where we're at with that. A lot of our revenues are pretty tough to really tie down to, to, to know where we're at with them because a good portion of them don't even come in until the very end of the year. But there are some that we can look at. So property taxes collected currently are at 100%. I don't know that, how much more will be collected throughout the year, but if anything else is, that that's in excess of what was budgeted. The TLT is at 90% of budget right now and I guess I should have mentioned that this is a report on January financials. So in January, we were 59% of the way through the year, TLT is at 90% at that point in time. I am expecting it'll probably end up about $600,000 from budget. So that's a, that's a very good thing, 30% of which gets to be used on any discretionary spending. The majority of that 30% goes to the, to the sheriff's office right now. Building permits is another positive highlight in our revenues. They are, as of January, they are at 83% of budget, so $372,000 on a budget of $450,000. So they are expecting to be up about 30 or 40% at the end of the year. That will help that department out immensely as they look to, well, do, do what they're trying to do down there. Park fees are also up, $120,000 this year versus $111,000 last year. And so they are 71% of their budget, so again, we're seeing some, some good positives in those numbers. The not-so-positive parts, this is a small number, but we, we budgeted $35,000, $35,000 in rents last year, we, we ended up not renting any of our extra space out and utilizing it ourselves, so like I said, small number, but sometimes every dollar counts. Property registration and animal licenses, they're, they're both down. Property registration, we haven't collected anything on, on a budget of $125,000. Animal licenses, we budgeted at $75,000 and they are, we've collected about $13,000 on that. Now, there, in that department, there was, there has been turnover and Melvin is working on all of these different programs to, to get them up and running again and so, so that, so he is aware of all of that and he- So, so that, so he is aware of all of that, and he's working towards it. And I think there's even something later today on property, on one of those items.
Workshop, yeah.
And the last point I want to hit on with revenues is in planning. Planning, last year had generated about a hundred thousand in fees. Currently, they're at about eighty-seven thousand. So, they're at about fifty-three percent of their budget right now, a little bit down than from what they should be. But, again, when we do these budgets, it's a lot of guesswork. It depends on, you know, we look at historicals and what we think things are going to be for that year, and sometimes those, the fees that plan generates don't actually occur since, anyway. Moving on to the expenses, then. Do have an exciting sheet for that. So, as I go through expenses, our general expenses, everything really looks pretty much in line with what it should be. Actually, a little down from what they, from what it should be. Again, we're fifty-nine percent of the way through the year at the end of January. You can see most of these, most of the numbers here are, so the assessors is at forty-three percent of budget, and the DA is thirty-eight percent of budget. And you see that going down the line. The sheriff's offices, office departments, forty-one percent, fifty-three percent. So, so all of that really equates to cutting, coming out ahead of budget on our expenses and cutting into that two million dollar... Short, yeah, shortfall budgeted item that never materialized. You'll see that it shows a tax collector, tax collection at seventy-three percent of budget. I don't think that's anything to really worry about. The biggest cause of that is he had his software expenses hit, and that, and that should kind of come in line. There are a couple other areas that are slightly over that helped make that number up, but nothing really concerning.
Where were we at there again, I'm sorry?
What's the question?
Yeah, you said, is it the seventy-three percent of...
Seventy-three percent of budget.
Okay.
So, if you, if you look at, we're fifty-nine percent of the way through the year, it appears that it is slightly over budget. But, again, it's, it doesn't always, this doesn't always tell the whole story. You do have to look at what's causing it, and I believe that most of what's causing this is the software expense that hit partly through the year, which will kind of balance out as the year goes on.
Thank you. I think that's a front-loaded contract on that software program.
Yeah, I think that, I think the expense hit back in November, October, November, something like that. Down here, again, private septic is up, but it will be offset by the revenues. Surveyor isn't really a concern, that's, that will just be backfilled by the cornerstone preservation fund. And... Anyway, again, the big takeaway here is that most, that departments are watching their budgets and they're, they're under, on their general expenses. Any questions on that before moving on? Great. Okay, then looking at payroll. So, payroll. Come down here and look at this first. Based on where we're at for the year, so fifty-nine percent of the way through the year, we are under budget by nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars total. That's an increase over last, from last month of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So, a hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand dollars is kind of that savings that we're seeing from open business positions that aren't being filled, whether intentionally or unintentionally. But, and of that, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and seventeen directly affects the general fund. So, again, this, this five hundred and seventeen thousand indirectly goes against that two million dollar shortfall and adds to all the other areas where we are under budgeted for expenses. Not, not a whole lot here to report either. You see a few more departments in red rather than green, treasurer's offices, very, and they're all very slightly over in their payroll. Sixty-two percent, sixty percent for juvenile, sixty-one percent in solid waste. But, nothing really, nothing that really stands out. This account, accounting is over sixty-seven percent. That's really due to how it was budgeted. Most of those wages were, at that time the budget was done, wages were split between accounting and BAC office. And that's why you see those wages as low as they are. So, it kind of washes out. Okay. I wanted to give everybody an update on where we're at on, on the ARP funds. So, currently, these are all the projects that, where money has been allocated. Some of them have expenses on them, most of them do not yet. So, most of the money that has been allocated has not been, has not been spent yet. These two down here, this H-Bot and SAM study, I don't have an order for those. I think it might be talked about later today, I'm not positive. But, but I haven't, I haven't allocated anything that I don't have an order for.
Okay.
So, currently, we've allocated one point three million and have a remaining of nine hundred and nineteen million left. This is on the first installment of those ARP funds. Say again?
Nine hundred and nineteen thousand.
Did I say a million?
Yeah.
That's a good mistake to make.
Mistake to make. Depending on your perspective.
So, Brad, if, in the in-transit, is that, so...
Oh, that's...
That is what's been allocated?
Yeah, those, yeah, those have been allocated, there is an order for them, I just don't have them yet, they're being recorded right now.
So, where are they in that nine hundred and nineteen thousand?
The money has been allocated.
Okay, I got you.
Total is one point four...
Okay, I got you, I don't...
The only, the only thing that aren't in here are the, are the sixty-three thousand dollars for the H-Bot and the five thousand dollars for the SAM study, because I don't have orders for those, but the board did approve them. So, we'll, there might be some discussion later today about that, or, or, we'll work on getting those, so...
I think there was a vote, all we need to do, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, is just get the order, right?
That's correct, yes. And that's, that's really everything I have, really, and in conclusion, like I said, payroll is really cutting into that shortfall. Departments are continuing to monitor their expenses and to be frugal there. I think the really low revenues really continue to be our biggest problem here, and that's something that, there's been some movement on recently, and that's, and that's a good thing, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Court.
Would you mind going back to your bottom of the three links you had there?
The, which one?
Just, just go back one, to the three options you had on your different, yeah, go to the bottom one, payroll, excuse me. You were in my office a few months ago, and either I reminded you or you reminded me just on our public employees' retirement system payments, what that cost us annually.
Right.
You remember off the top of your head?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I can, I'll make a note and include it in, in next month's review.
I think it's about one point six million, four hundred and twenty-two employees. Is that, I think that's pretty close. And the reason I bring that up is it's a state-mandated program, and it's in a lot of turmoil, and so I have a lot of concerns, and so do a lot of other people on where that's going for the entire state, because that's everybody's retirement that is a public employee at any government level, so... Curry County might want to be a little outspoken on that down the road and tell the legislature to get their act together.
I will let that be up to, three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Good report.
All right, thank you, Bradley.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we have a couple of distinguished guests here from American Red Cross, and I wonder if we could just reverse the last two presentations? I had told Council Pope mine could go just about anytime on the fire awareness.
There's three left, three, four, three presentations.
You want to move...
Oh, excuse me, we're, we're on D and E, so we have...
Got C still.
Treasurer Barnes has the presentation.
Road Patrol Fund.
So, could, after he's done, could we do the American Red Cross?
All right, Dave.
Good morning, David Barnes, County Treasurer. I watched the last meeting, I wasn't here for it, but I watched the last workshop, and there's a lot of misinformation that I wanted to try to clarify this morning about the road fund. The first is the name of it, actually. Back in 2018, the governor and the legislature adopted ORS 368 dot seven oh six, which gave seven counties in the state of Oregon the ability to use their road fund money for sheriff's patrol. Accordingly, I, as far as I'm concerned, it's no longer the road fund, it's now the Road and Sheriff Patrol Fund. The sheriff has just as much right to that money as the roadmaster or any, anybody else who's been authorized by the state legislature to use it. The second thing I want to bring up is the Road and Sheriff Patrol Fund does not belong to the roadmaster. I listened to a lot of his comment and a lot of his presentation two weeks ago, and he seems to, to me anyway, to my observation of it, it seems like that he's treating this like this is his own personal fund for his department, and that's not correct. The Road and Sheriff Patrol Fund is county money. It's not just for the roadmaster to use. Number three that I like to bring up that keeps getting forgotten is without using road and sheriff patrol funds for sheriff patrol, the county would be in a two million dollar budget hole right now. In order to plug that hole, the only place for that money to come from will be departmental budgets, which translates to loss of jobs. We're already, as a county, I don't know that we've ever done a study, but from speaking to people and from looking around in the fourteen months that I've been here now, I know that the county provides barely above state-mandated minimum services. We don't have anything left to cut. You know, we're not going to save any money by cutting, we need to, we need to earn some revenue. But, the last thing I want to point out is that contrary to the highly inaccurate and fear-mongering graph that the roadmaster put up here last week, the road fund will not be out of money in four years. I repeat, the road fund will not be out of money in four years. I've heard that since I first came to this county, and people have told me that they've been hearing it for the last ten, fifteen years now, that in four or five years, the road fund is going to be out of money. Mr. Christensen put up a graph that showed the downward line of spending four million dollars a year and how in the next four years, we'd be out of money. His graph was misleading, he didn't include the revenue that we get in there, which from various sources is almost three million dollars a year comes back into the road fund every year. So, we're not depleting it as fast as he said. You know, I don't know if his, if his intention was, was, I don't know if he intended to mislead or if it was just a mistake to mislead, but it was very misleading to keep saying, to keep perpetuating this myth that the road fund is going to be out of money in four years. By my calculations, I believe it's closer to twenty to twenty-two years before we run out of money, if we even do. I just wanted to take a moment to clarify these things to the board today, after listening to last week's just misrepresentation of the facts that I heard. I felt it important that you all know where we stand on this. It's, the road fund, in closing, it's not in control of the roadmaster, it's in control, you know, the sheriff and the roadmaster both put in if they need money, and it's up to the board of commissioners and the budget committee to decide whether either one of them gets it. It's not the choice of the roadmaster. And the fact that everybody keeps saying the road fund is going to be empty in four years is just really, it's, like I said, it's a myth. And people need to stop saying it because it's just absolutely not true. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We might have a little disagreement on how fast that fund is evaporating. The roadmaster and the sheriff both fight fiercely for their employees and their budgets. And to say that any one of the three roadmasters we've had here, especially Richard Christensen, to view that as their own personal fund, which I'm quoting you now, I just think that's really wrong and unfortunate and also misguided. So, I don't think he looks at it as his personal fund, nor did Doug Robbins, nor did Dan Crumley. But they did, they were pretty intent on guarding that money, and thank God they did. That's all I have, thank you.
That's it? So, yeah, you can move, we can move Red Cross to D if you, if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, ladies. I see you're busy in Brookings, I saw the blood donor...
Yeah, well, I have some information, just kind of some general statistics if you want to take a look at that here.
Thank you.
So, you can, you know, share a little bit about...
Mr. Chair, while Ms. Headitch is going up to the podium, and she's accompanied by Judy Collins, so I've gotten to know over the last few years, just seeing how they have responded to the Chaco Bar Fire, the Klondike Fire, the September 2020 fires. It's just great to, it's great to have you both here, and you and I were working a little bit late last night to get a proclamation together, thank you. And so, I'll present that to the board at the conclusion of their presentation. Thanks for coming to Curry County, both of you.
All right, well, thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda today just to share a little bit about what Red Cross does. Oftentimes, people think of Red Cross, they think of blood and flood, you know, because we do respond to the big natural disasters like the hurricanes and tornadoes and wildfires. But what people often don't realize is our number one disaster is single-family home fires. So, across the region, the Red Cross, we respond to two to three fires a day that occur. And how we support the clients is that we are notified by the fire department and that we show up to the scene, we show up when we're notified, and that we give the clients what's called a client assistance card, that we upload funds onto the card to take care of their basic human needs. So, if you lost your house in a fire, your first thoughts are, where am I going to sleep? What am I going to eat, and what am I going to wear? And that's what the Red Cross does. So, there's only two organizations that show up at your worst times, the fire department and it's the Red Cross. So, our workforce is ninety percent volunteer, which is what Judy is. We have a really strong contingent of volunteers here in Curry County, they're very, very dedicated. And actually, within the regional leadership of Red Cross, so one of our top leaders, like Judy, helps oversee transportation, the Cal-Cals oversee the finance programs. And so, we've got some really strong leadership within the Curry County of volunteers. And then, on the other side of the Red Cross, we have the blood. And so, Red Cross, we support forty percent of the nation's blood supply, which is huge, it's a huge responsibility. The processing center that we have for the Pacific Northwest is up in Portland, and there's actually a blood drive today in Gold Beach at the, at the library. So, we're coming out of a very critical time within blood. For the last two months, we were in an emergency appeal, which meant that we had one day supply of blood or less for several blood types. We are creeping out of that right now. We're up to now a four-day blood supply, which is still precarious. We also anticipate that as the COVID levels are going down, hospitalization levels are going down, a lot of the deferred surgeries are now going to be put back onto the books. And a deferred surgery is if you could wait six weeks, wait six weeks because we need to reserve the resources in the hospitals. So, what we anticipate is that also, as elective surgeries come in, there'll also be an increased demand of blood, which is our ongoing message, is blood is constant, always constant. And you can donate blood every fifty-six days. So, I myself am a three-gallon blood donor, and it's something where, if you think about a hundred people in a room, thirty-three percent of those individuals can donate blood. That means they're of age, they're of weight, they, you know, deferrals, medications, you know, military service, all those different things, like mad cow disease in the nineteen eighties. A lot of, so thirty-three percent of folks can give blood, but only three percent actually do give blood. So, that, and we're really grateful, we have a very strong support of blood drives along the coast. They come, the, the collection crew... crew comes from Medford and so they come out for two or three days along the coast. The appointments fill up. So our message is if you can give blood, please do give blood because it's the blood that was given four days earlier that's actually on the shelf. So if you were to have a trauma like a car accident or cancer or newborn baby or a burn victim, it's the blood that someone gave four days earlier and not the blood that you're giving like right now to help your friend who's in, in crisis. I also wanted to share too, we have a smoke alarm installation program that's, we've had it for about seven years, but as we're coming out of COVID, like many other people are, we are resuming our smoke alarm installs. And actually our disaster program manager from, who supports Curry County, actually she covers six, six counties in Southern Oregon, she'll be installing some smoke alarms with some individuals that found out. And that's one of the flyers that we, I put in, in your folder. Anyone and everyone is, is eligible to receive a free smoke alarm. So what we do is you contact us either by the phone number or by email. Sometimes we canvass particular neighborhoods. So we really highlight the most vulnerable communities to receive the, it's not only the early detection, but it's also we do education. So yes, we do put a smoke alarm in every bedroom, in the hallway, in the living areas. If they live upstairs, downstairs, basements, we do that as well. But it's also, what do you do? Like, did you realize you have two minutes to get out of your house? If you're not burning bacon and you're all of a sudden your, your house smokes up, you have two minutes to get out of your house because, before the smoke really debilitates you. And then the other education part is where do you go? Like have that escape plan with your family to say, we're going to meet at the mailbox or we're going to meet at the neighbor's house. Because whether you go out the window or the back door or the front door, you don't want family members running back into a burning house when their family members are already outside. You just don't know where they are. So that's one of the, the newer programs. And again, another, the lesser known program, but we also want to highlight now is the services to the armed forces. And so especially with the Ukraine situation right now, we have a lot of military. So we have what's called, it's our SAF, the Services to Armed Forces Program. We do the emergency communication for the military. So whenever there's a birth, a death, an illness or hardship at home, that's how service members are contacted. So let's say mom and dad live in Curry County and son or daughter is deployed wherever they are, whether it's stateside or whether it's overseas. And let's say father has a heart attack and he's at the hospital. So yeah, the mom could probably text, you know, son or daughter to say, you need to come home, dad's in the hospital. But the command is going to like, well, we need verification and that, not just because your mom texted you, right? Before we send you home. So that's where the Red Cross calls the hospital, gets the diagnosis, then prognosis, recommendation should they come home. And then we communicate that message overseas or domestically to the command and that's how they're notified and able to come back. So we're doing that right now with all the National Guard members and other military that's happening, that are supporting Ukraine and all across the, the world every single day. We have eight contacts a day or eight types of services a day that the Red Cross, and we're not a huge military state, you know, not like Washington or Texas or Georgia. So those are a few highlights. I want to also let Judy have a few minutes to talk about her experience as a volunteer because she is, you know, a local resident. She and I work closely together. And so she's been on several deployments, most recently to the tornadoes actually. And that's one of the great things about the Red Cross is that we're all trained the same way, whether you live in Kentucky or whether you live in Maine. We all take the same Red Cross training, all the same systems. And I'm a firm believer, having deployed myself, if you wanted to meet the best of humankind, it's the Red Cross. So let Judy have a few moments.
So, quick question.
Yep.
You, go ahead Judy, get it up there. You can probably answer. So you said four days of blood right now. So like pre-COVID, what was the days and what's, I know your target's probably really thousands of days, but what's?
Yeah, typically it was about, kind of on average, like a seven day blood supply.
Okay, so.
Because it's, it's, we're always kind of, always, we like to have more because blood can actually be on the shelf for 42 days.
Okay.
That's the lifespan of blood.
Two days.
Platelets is five days. So by the time it gets tested, you know, it takes about three days to get tested and shipped to wherever it goes. You kind of have two days to use the platelets and the remainder of days to kind of do blood. So typically we'd have about a week's supply. Of course, when, like during COVID, like when people really wanted to help out, our numbers like skyrocketed really high. But it's, it's just, you know, there, there's been, it's, it's coming back and in large part because of the education and the appeal that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. So I got a, you said you're a three gallon. I'm, I got my gallon pin.
Oh, good.
And I'm a Red Cross licensed, certified licensed lifeguard. So.
Excellent.
Red, go Red Cross. I'm, I'm on Red Cross's side.
Thank you. One of the programs that, that she left off so that I could have something to talk about is what we call the Pillowcase Program. And it's for third, fourth and fifth graders. And we go into the classroom. We've been doing it virtually during COVID. We will, we will begin to go back into the classroom shortly. And we teach the third, fourth and fifth graders about how to be prepared in case of an emergency. And as Carissa said, I am local. And I actually heard about Pillowcase before I became a Red Cross volunteer. I was in line at Rayleigh's and this little fifth grader was talking to his dad in line in front of me and he said, so dad, you think you can get your, you think you can fit out, get outside the window? Can you escape out the bedroom window if we have a fire? Okay? So Pillowcase talks to the children about how to evacuate. Third grade is with an emphasis, preparation, but an emphasis on home fires. We have, because of where we are, tsunamis and earthquakes. So each year they have a different concentration, but we teach them how to be prepared. And Pillowcase is exactly what we're giving them. The program began as a result of Hurricane Katrina. The college dorm kids were trying to evacuate and they had nothing to take their belongings with them. So they started stuffing everything into pillowcases. And we partnered with Walt Disney at the time and we have these massive, really heavy duty, extra large pillowcases with all the Disney characters on them. And as we're teaching the kids how to be prepared, they're coloring. And that's giving them something subconsciously to do and something physically to do so that they're actually retaining more of this information. But after we've presented in the classroom, the next day the teacher gives them back their pillowcases to finish covering them. And they talk about, did you really go home and talk to your parents? We give them a booklet that has, they are allowed to draw a map of their house and plan out their evacuation. Where do they meet? And the Pillowcase has a, we recommend and teach the kids to have the Pillowcase next to their bed with a couple of very important things in it, like Band-Aids and extra water and dog food. And everybody has a plan. So that will begin again in earnest as soon as COVID restrictions have been lifted. I became a Red Cross volunteer on August 17th of 19, or of 2017. And the next day, we had a little event down on the beach that was started by some children playing with fireworks in the Driftwood. And I lived on the beach at the time and I watched as Tyson and his crew fought valiantly to save our town and thank God they did. But I got a call to work in the Riley Creek Shelter, which was open for Chaco Bar. And I said, I'm sorry, I can't. I've been evacuated myself from my own home. Even though I was a Red Cross volunteer, I got, I got the privilege to leave. So once it was all clear and we could all get back into our houses, I reported to Riley Creek. And we spent two weeks at Riley Creek and they were gracious enough to let us take over their school. Then we moved it to the fairgrounds for another three weeks and took care of our clients. I worked on Campfire at Paradise. And as Carissa mentioned, I did just come home January 1st from Mayfield, Kentucky with the tornadoes. And it's, it's really difficult to see the disaster, but I'm incredibly proud to say I'm part of this organization. And through the generosity of our donors at that particular disaster, that tornado was on the ground for 250 miles. And it totally obliterated four towns. And for the first time in the history of the Red Cross, we were able to physically hand out client assistance cards to people nine days after that tornado touched down. There was such wide devastation, we could get a month's work of work done in six days and begin to help our clients that much faster. And it's all done with the cooperation of the local organizations and governments and we really appreciate your support.
Thanks.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I've got a proclamation. I won't take the time to read that. It covers very well what the two of those wonderful volunteers communicated. But we got this done early this morning. I'll pass it to the board. JJ's aware. And wow, can't thank you enough.
Chris had a question?
Oh, I don't have a question. I just want to make a statement and I think I've said it to you before. Red Cross is an unbelievable organization. In Vietnam campaign, my, one of my brothers was in Vietnam and no one could find him. His COs couldn't find him. He was in a, in a chopper wing and they'd been shot down. No one could find him. And guess what? In the middle of Chulai, Vietnam, the Red Cross found him and called us. This is in like 1969. The Red Cross called us on a dial phone from Vietnam to tell us that he was okay. So, good job.
Could we approve this proclamation? Do you trust me on the, you want me to read it real quick?
Oh, I think, I think we can approve it. Yeah, we need to take a break, but I just, I want to give you guys a applause. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. So I think we are, it's 10 o'clock. We'll take a break. We have a 10:15 presentation with some ONC County updates. So 10:15, we'll be back here. Thank you folks. We're back on board. Presentation, Curry County Association of ONC Counties update. Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this gives me a lot of pleasure. It's an honor actually to introduce the two that have come in to visit with us today on the Association of ONC Counties, 18 BLM counties. They're going to have about a 15, 20 minute presentation. I'm going to start with just a little introduction of Tim Freeman. Tim, I, I watched you at the Oregon Legislature, those eight years, 2008 through 2015. Talk about a no nonsense guy, very, very effective rep for Douglas County. And then the last five years I've been on the AOCC Board, I've watched you work. I don't think, other than a guy by the name of Rocky McVey knows anything more about timber management, all that, everything that comes from that in, in this entire state. And then going to Rocky, Rocky, you have, you were a county commissioner for 12 years in your younger years. And you know, my grandfather served for 18 years and I think you officially have the second record and that really is a tribute to the work you've done. You know, you take all of our calls and you have 18 other counties that you represent and you, you take that time and it's just been greatly appreciated. And because of your work around the state, the 27 years that you've been with AOCC, it's just been quite a source of pride, if you don't mind me embarrassing you just a little bit, but a source of pride for our county. I've watched you and Tim hold a very efficient, very effective group together, the five years I've been there. And that's of course Kevin Davis, Chris Colwell, Doug Robertson, and the two of you. You, you do, I'm going to repeat, run very efficiently. And just really appreciate you've taken the time today. And either one of you can go first, doesn't matter. But we just want to welcome you and glad to have you here. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Boyce. And as we call you from over here, the other Commissioner Boyce.
Yeah.
Here in Douglas County, you have our own Commissioner Boyce. So thank you guys for giving us a few minutes today. I'm going to lead off and then Rocky's going to fix whatever I say wrong. So I appreciate the introduction. In the scheme of the ones of us that are working on this, I'm still one of the new guys and I've been working on it now for seven years. So we have some incredibly experienced and knowledgeable staff members that work for the Association of ONC Counties. And we have a really interesting and great history as an association. So Association of ONC Counties was formed in 1925, which of course predates the ONC Act. And it was formed for the sole purpose of the 18 ONC Counties having a voice in how those lands are managed and what happens to them. So since 1925, we've had an opportunity as counties to have our voice heard on these very unique and specific lands. These lands only occur in the 18 western counties of Oregon. They are unique in the fact that they are a dominant use land, not a multiple use. They are checkerboard in nature. So they're not like a contiguous national forest. They're chopped up into little blocks of about every square mile. And they really go all the way from the California border almost to the Washington border. And they primarily are within 30 miles of the railroad on either side. There's a few exceptions to that. They are mostly managed by the Bureau of Land Management. About 2.1 million of the acres are managed by the BLM. Just under half a million acres is managed, are managed by the US Forest Service and their variety of national forests that there's some ONC lands in, which is not known to everybody. It's called contovered lands. Our organization, again, since 1925, has been dedicated to this work and only this work. We don't work on other issues. We have the Association of Oregon Counties for the variety of other issues that county commissioners are focused on and working on. We're very fortunate at the Association of ONC Counties, we only work on ONC issues. And the primary work we do is centered around the 1937 ONC Act. That act is the current congressional act that dedicates these lands and designates them in the manner in which Congress wants them to be managed. Again, they're a dominant use for timber management, but there's also other values that can be created in, in the management of timber that are important. We believe that there's a way to do that and create and accomplish all the values that are important in these lands. I will note that the 1937 ONC Act was the very first conservation act ever passed by Congress. It's the first time Congress recognized that you couldn't just harvest timber, go over to the next watershed, harvest it and go over the hill and keep going. And they recognize that at some point you got to think about how you do this. And they put a term in called sustained yield. So the principle, sustained yield are very simple. They are simply that you never harvest more than what grows. It's very, very much a principle of the ONC Act. That ONC Act passed in a bipartisan way. It is supported by many different political affiliations, legislators and different political affiliations. And it is very unique to these ONC lands. And that work, since I've been involved, I've had a chance to meet with, meet and work with three different administrations, starting with President Obama and his administration. I had a chance to meet with then Secretary of Interior Sally Jewell, who is Secretary of Interior, the Department of Interior oversees the BLM, which that's who manages our lands. I had a chance to host two Secretaries of Interior as the Association President here in Oregon. We had Brian Zinke and David Bernhardt, both come to Oregon. And we as an association, got a chance to meet with and talk to both of those Secretaries of Interior. I will note that in the meeting with David Bernhardt, we had several times where he said, my boss, you know, when I talk to my boss about this or when my boss calls, I can, politely interrupted him and made sure everybody around the table realized when he said my boss, he meant the President of the United States. So our association gets to work at a pretty high level. Again, as your Association President, I was invited to the White House by the President for remarks around environment and met with the Secretary of Interior and other pretty high level members of the administration. The current Secretary of Interior, Deb Hanlon, she was scheduled to be in Oregon and had a family emergency and had to change her plans. So we will get that work done and of course work with the current administration. So one of the things we do every year is we, as a board, by the way, the Board of Directors for the Association of ONC Counties is made up of a county commissioner from each member county. Back in the day, the, the counties all voted on, on each other. Back in the day, the, the counties all voted on each other's representatives on that board, and we have since changed the bylaws, so each county selects, each county Board of Commissioners selects who they want to be on the board, and every member county has a board slot on the Board of Directors at the Association of ONC Counties. So each year, we go through and set a list of priorities for our staff and our executive board to be working on, and I'm not going to go through that entire list. I'll run out of time, but I do want to hit a few highlights, and again, I want you to hear the importance of having an association working on these issues for counties. There is no other organization that represents the county's interests in these lands. So without the Association of ONC Counties, there literally would be no county representation in the importance of these lands in our communities. I'm not sure if I said this or not, but our association's only had three executive directors in the entire time that we've had the association, three permanent executive directors. There was a couple of interims, and Rocky, of course, has been one of those and is, has an amazing career working with the association. We've only had a handful of counties that have had presidents of the board from their counties, and your county, of course, is one of those. So you share a lot of history with Douglas County, with this association. Curry County's been an important part of our association since its inception. So we'll go through these priorities pretty quickly, and then we'll leave some time for questions and some comments that Rocky might want to make. So one of the main focuses that we'll be working on this year is a continuation of monitoring and participating in the implementation of the Resource Management Plan litigation remedy. So that's kind of confusing. We were successful in some litigation on the Resource Management Plan in 2016. The judge ordered that they would either alter the plan or write a new plan that would meet the requirements of the ONC Act. We, as an association, are seeking to be a cooperating agency and will work closely with the BLM to make sure that the new Resource Management Plan meets the requirement that the judge sent out in the litigation. We continue to host and hold field tours with staff for the BLM and the Board of Directors of the Association and legislative staff around the Labor Day fires that are on ONC lands. This last summer, we hosted one here in Douglas County. We'll be hosting one further north this year and bringing the BLM staff, the state-level staff, and to talk about what happens after a wildfire, what, you know, what are the impediments of resetting the landscape? What is the interest of the counties in making sure that these lands are rehabilitated and back in production? So we'll continue to do that work, and we look forward to that. We work on legislative matters, so I call this the reconciliation bill, but it's really the Local Government Assistance and Tribal Fairness Fund that was part of the American Rescue Plan. There was some dollars in that bill specifically for revenue-receiving counties, and the Association of ONC Counties was granted a place at the table when we were talking to Treasury about those formulas and how those dollars will be sent out to counties. Those dollars haven't come to us yet, but our association, specifically Kevin Davis and Rocky, have been involved in making sure that that occurs in a way that we expect it to. And it should be similar to what, what's equal to a couple of years of a secural school payments, but on top of the secural school payments. So we're working on that, and we'll continue to follow that. That has to be done by the end of the federal fiscal year, so by the end of September of this year. Making sure the full implementation of the three-year pre-authorization of secural schools. And that implementation piece required a fix. That is now passed, both the Senate and the House, and waiting the President to sign it, unless we get an update from Rocky, that he was still waiting for that. But that's something we worked very closely on. Again, it took an act of Congress to fix that. We continue to look at executive orders that impact ONC lands. We work very closely to try to update the charts and who we're talking to for a variety of federal agencies, and I'll read you some of the, some of the acronyms. So the CEQ, the Department of Interior, the BLM, U.S. Forest Service, National Marine Fisheries, and many others. With each administration, there's new people that come in, and just knowing who to call and talk to is not always easy. We have our staff here in Oregon that work on that, and they work with staff that we, or contract we have with lobbyists in PC to help us find out who to even talk to. We update and work on organizational charts with the Senate, House committees. Those are always changing. There's always new people coming in. We have to make sure we're up to speed on that. We constantly work on moving the funding back to, the ONC Act calls for counties to get 75% of timber receipts, not 50. That's part of a rider that's in the Department of Interior appropriation bill every year, and we'd like to move that back to 75%. Talking to new congressional staff and congressional members, this is a big one. Again, if we're not talking about these lands and these unique set of lands in the United States, nobody is. There's no other state that has these lands. There's no other group that's working on this. So we constantly have to educate and talk to and bring this issue forward. Working very hard to make sure that the wildfire preparedness funding stays in place and the BLM doesn't pull out of that and try to create their own firefighting entity. We believe them working with Oregon Department of Forestry on wildfire preparedness and suppression is the best way to protect these lands, because, again, they're checkerboard in the neighbor lands. The neighbor, a lot of these lands are protected by the Department of Forestry. Doesn't make sense to have every other square mile a different fire protection agency. We continue to talk about the negative impact that counties, the Good Neighbor Authority and Stewardship Contracting creates. Again, we believe those two programs take the county timber receipts to fund the agencies that are already appropriated funding to manage these lands from Congress. We don't think they need our money. We watch virtually every day to make sure the BLM is meeting their requirements of the Resource Management Plan. That takes a lot of work, and I will tell you, the last couple of years, the BLM has met their allowable sales quantity or their targets in the plan. Committingly, that plan has very low targets, but for the first time in almost 30 years, they are meeting those targets, and our association is grateful for that, but we also engage in that almost every day and make sure that that happens. So we have a new congressman that represents a portion of the ONC lands, Congressman Cliff Benz. I served in the legislature with Representative Benz. He's Representative Benz now, he was Representative Benz then, but he's certainly at a different level now, and his new district takes in quite a bit more of ONC land here in Douglas County and other, other counties. So we're getting him up to speed, and we continue to make sure he understands the ONC story and the incredible opportunities that ONC lands bring for our, for our counties, for our communities, and for our nation. We engage with the National Forest, Counties and Schools Coalition and continue to work on secural schools through that. And then over this next year, sadly, and sadly for me, probably happily for Rocky, we have to find a new executive director in transition. Rocky's finally reached a, a very magic point in his life where he's going to get to retire and enjoy life a little bit, where he's not working on ONC every single day. I guess it's in his blood, and he'll still work with us and help us as we move forward. So that's really our, our short list of priorities moving into the next year. I wanted you all, as a board, to hear first how much we appreciate your involvement. Court does a fantastic job at our meetings. He brings great insight and represents your county well. Your county being a part of our association is important to us, and we hope that we're adding value to the work you all do, and you see the value in the work that we do. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to Rocky real quick, and then we'll open it up for questions for the two of you. Much appreciated. Tim?
Thank you, Commissioner Boyce, and thanks a lot, Tim. I think you've covered all the priorities where we've been working on. I could spend time talking about the secural school payment, the pill payment, or the Section 605, but I think Tim hit the highlights on that. We're fairly confident that the secural school payment for federal fiscal year 2021 will be released sometime this spring. We'll continue to keep you updated as we know more information. As Tim mentioned, Section 605 of the American Rescue Plan, they're going to have to come to a decision on the distribution formula before the end of this federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. There would be probably the, the same amount that you're receiving in, in your secural school payment that the counties would receive. We're working as best we can to make sure that formula meets the criteria that was suggested by Senator Wyden when they got that portion of the bill included in the American Rescue Plan. So open for any questions.
I got a question, Rocky. Tim mentioned a little bit about BLM and, and what, you know, and I'm just getting into this. I've only, I've been to a few of your meetings, and I appreciate you guys, how the work you put in. But I remember at one meeting, you, you would think, you know, if you just looked at the numbers, you'd think the BLM is doing their part, but I think it was Tim who said they actually celebrate mediocrity, or because it, it was the percentages, and if you just, if you looked, if you just heard percentages, you would think, oh, they're doing a good job, but can you kind of expound on what those percentages are? And, and it's really, in the big picture, a boondoggle, isn't it? Or does that make any sense?
Tim, do you want to jump on that? Because I mean, they're doing what?
Yeah, so...
...good in the R and D.
Yeah, the 2016 Resource Management Plan, which, we, by the way, we filed our lawsuit the day they signed that plan into record, uh, record of decision. We knew it was inadequate the day they did it, so the sustained yield portion of that plan is 206 million board feet a year. The lands grow 1.2 billion. So the, the plan calls for a sustained yield amount, a billion board feet less than what grows.
Yep.
The Act calls for sustained yield. It calls for what it grows, no more than it grows, but what it grows. So we knew that was inadequate. So you have to put into context every time, and, and this is not trying to bash the BLM. We had this talk when they were in the room. You know, it's their job, and, and, you know, part, part of the work that they do is to show positive things they're doing, but it's always in the context of what the Resource Management Plan allows them to do. So if they achieve 100% of what the Resource Management Plan calls for, they can come and say, hey, we received, you know, we did 100%, or we did 105% of what we should have done. But it's not in the context of, of what the plan is. So we, you know, we, as an association, think it's important, and we tell our members, you know, what the context of the number is. So, you know, 200 million or 278 million board feet, that's a big number, right? 278 million is a big number by anybody's measurement, and that's really what they're achieving now, or even up to 300 million, uh, uh, because of some of the salvage. But if you put that in context of 1.2 billion is possible, you know, it's 19%. So it, it's, it's important that we always talk about context, and that, I think that's your question, and, you know, I, I, I use the term celebrating failure, and that's probably not fair to the staff because they have to abide by the plan. You know, and it was our, our organization, along with some of the industry organizations, said, wait a minute, this plan does not match or meet what Congress has said, what the law says, and that's why we litigate. Judge agreed with us, and we'll be writing a new plan.
Thank you.
A couple of things to add to that. If you, if you look at the Resource Management Plan that's currently in place, there's only 22% of the entire land base that is in the harvestable land base, but there's an overlay included in that called the Critical Habitat on the Spotted Owl Recovery Plan. So you really don't have 22% of the land base that, that you're working with. That's why the association in 2016 filed a suit. We were successful in our decision. November 22nd of 2019, we got a, a ruling in our favor that reserves, which is the other 80% of the land base is in, are illegal. They can't do it. We waited two years for a remedy, so November 18th, 2021, we received a remedy for that. BLM has until, I think it's the 18th of next, of this month, of March, there will be a status review of what BLM has accomplished between the time the remedy came out in November and now. There was specific items that they have to address, and as far as we know, there's been little to no activity to address those items. So the status review later this month is going to be very interesting. The Association of ONC Counties will be a part of that, along with the government and the industry representatives.
So I, just a couple of things, Rocky and Tim. The last meeting, two big news items that came out. Number one, well, one wasn't a news item, it was common sense, but number one is, how in the world did you, you manage to get a table at the National, a spot at the table, National Resource Committee, the National Association of Counties? That is, that, that was just amazing to hear, and, and it was very good news. Do I have that correct?
So we have a place at the table in a couple of different ways. So as far as that funding from, from the Rescue Act, we were able to get a place at the table at Treasury as they develop the rules on how that funding and the formulas. So, so we have that. Organizations like the National Association of Counties also have a place at that table. So I think maybe that's what you're referencing, is that...
Correct.
And we were able to achieve, the, the ONC counties were recognized by Congress at that sort of level that, you know, we can have the National Association of Counties at the table, but that doesn't, those folks don't represent ONC counties. ONC needs their own spot, so we have our own spot in that role. Again, these lands are unique. They don't occur in any other state, and they only occur in half the counties in Oregon. So I think, I think that just speaks to the importance of having this association, is that, you know, we, you know, not only need to be there, but we've built a level of credibility and, and working really with everybody. I want you to hear me say that one more time. Our board's a bipartisan group. We work with all the different administrations. This issue is not a partisan issue. Managing the proper management, the responsible management of forest lands and following the, the ONC Act of 1937 is not partisan in nature. It is very much about the proper way to manage, and we think we can be a model for the entire country if done correctly.
Tim, the other thing, I, I believe it was you that mentioned at our last meeting, the effort that AOCC is working to, you know, on the Archie Creek Fire, I think you got 2% or 3% of the timber salvage. On the Chaco Bar, you know, I don't mind repeating the horrible numbers that we were able to harvest less than 3% of the burned timber. And the point you made that I, I really would like the public to hear here, and our board, that timber that is owned by the taxpayers and the citizens lays on the ground and goes to waste forever, not to mention the additional fire damage or fire risk that it brings when it's all dried. And so anyway, you made that point. Excellent. You might want to expound on that just a little bit, please.
Well, the only thing I would add is the Resource Management Plan prohibits salvage logging in the reserves. So in that 80%, Rocky was talking about that is in reserve, that the judge said is illegal. You can't have in reserve. The BLM can't even look at doing salvage work in that. They can look at doing some roadside hazardry, but they can't do any salvage in those areas. And, you know, you covered the, the potential future fire danger. You covered the, the resource. I mean, literally, you know, the Labor Day fires, billions, would it be billions of dollars?
Yes.
Where the timber was burnt in western Oregon that was owned by the public. That timber had tremendous value, virtually the same value the day after the fire as the day before, and because of the way the federal government handles post-catastrophic events, the vast majority of that timber, whether it's on Forest Service or on ONC land, will remain standing to rot and then fall and be future fire. And finally, the important thing about the ONC lands is a little bit different than Forest Service, is that because it's every square mile, our industrial timberland partners and neighbors, they have taken the wood off of their land, the dead wood, the dead trees... taken the wood off of their land, the dead wood, the dead trees, turned it into a valuable commodity, sequestered the carbon that was in that wood into building products and replanted their lands to grow a healthy new forest that will create all the benefits of a vibrant, of living forest, knowing that their neighbor that is the ONC land will remain dead and dying and be a horrible risk for future fires. So, you know, again, because of these, the nature of the lands and the checkerboard nature, we have to also think about what happens on these neighboring properties and future fire and management and wildlife and clean air, clean water, all those things, recreation, all those values that are important to us. The private sector guys are doing it right and the publicly owned lands are not being cared for post catastrophic event.
Just one more, Mr. Chair.
Quick. I, I would just add, if I could, in, in some pretty round numbers on the Archie Creek Fire, there's over 40,000 acres of ONC land. The Roseburg District did an environmental assessment on what they could harvest. That was dropped down to, it was just over 6,000 acres out of the 47,000 acres that they had. They received a biological opinion from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, reducing that number that they could actually move in and put up timber sales on of 2,800 acres. That number is now being litigated, that environmental assessment's being litigated by a number of Oregon environmental groups contesting that much of the 40, 40 plus thousand acres.
The only thing I had, you mentioned percentages, when the BLM just kind of arbitrarily changed the, the formula on the 25%. That, that 25%, if we ever succeed on that, coming back to the counties, would be a ton of money. So I know that you're working very hard on that. Do you want to add anything on that before we go?
Let me just explain that. So, you know, in 1937 ONC Act, Congress decided that they were going to get into the timber business. They were going to grow timber, harvest it, regrow it and share a portion of that value with counties. Of course, at that time, counties wanted tax equivalency, we wanted property tax. Congress said, no, 1937, the timber had almost no value and there was no timber receipt to share. So as time went on, they started managing and harvesting timber. There had been advanced counties, the first sort of payment to counties in lieu of production had to be paid back. And also the land was purchased back from the railroad, both of which the federal government held back money from the county's timber receipts to pay for. So not only did we, you know, buy the lands back, but the money that we'd been advanced in lieu of tax payments, we had to pay back also. So in the early 50s, we received our first 75% payment as counties. The very next year, this association, recognizing the importance of these lands, created what was called the Plowback Fund. And we voluntarily gave back 25% of our 75% back to the BLM, back to the federal government for the purpose of managing these lands. With those dollars, they built the buildings in which they manage out of it. They built roads and bridges and culverts. They did fire suppression and they replanted it. And it was an investment counties saw in these lands. And a lot of you have driven out in these ONC lands and you see paved roads and you see, you know, facilities that were once very, very nice. And those dollars to do that primarily came from the counties. We invested back into those Plowback Funds. In the early 80s, the economy took a dip and the amount of what was being sold or the amount it was selling for was down. It didn't appear that the amount of money that the Plowback Fund was going to be sufficient to fund the service, BLM services. So that's when Congress decided to end the Plowback Fund and start funding an appropriation that included a rider, it's called, that says, we're going to, you know, the first portion of the BLM's budget will be 50% of the timber receipts. So that's, that's that rider. It's literally a sentence or two in the budget bill. Rocky and the staff, along with our Washington DC lobbyist and Congress folks, helped us get in the room with a congressional appropriator, which you can talk to a lot of people in this business and they've never been in a room with an actual congressional appropriator. That's normally only congressmen or congressman staff get in that room. We sat down with this appropriator and went through all this. He, right where it was in the big book, flipped it open and we made our case and he said, you're right, you know, that shouldn't be in there, we shouldn't do it that way. But he said, it doesn't matter, we're going to keep doing it. So we haven't given up on that, but it literally is an act of Congress every year when they do the appropriation bill, they put that rider in there, that piece of law that changes the, the formula from 75% to counties down to 50. But you're right, it would be a tremendous difference and as we transition off of secure roll schools, any bit of help with, with additional funding for our counties will be important.
We need it.
Just to expand on what Tim just said, BLM managed the same number of acres from 1954 until 1982 with that 25% that the counties gave back to them. That was their total manag-, they did not go on appropriated dollars until federal fiscal year 1982. So, I, you know, that just kind of puts it in perspective where they were sustainable with the amount of money they had with the timber that they were harvesting to today where it's not even close. You're, you're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of $20 million in their receipts to $116 million budget.
And up until 1995, the timber receipt portion to the Treasury was always greater than the appropriation for the management costs. So 95 is when that flipped.
Well, thank you both. Hey, Commissioner Freeman, I'm going to do a real quick immediately following here, 2022 Fire Awareness Presentation. And you, I'm going to show video and you're, you and the sheriff of Douglas County are the, the star. So, hey, thank you. And by the way, your office is a lot neater than that Commissioner Chris Boyce guy over there.
Oh, I got, I'm just looking on my desk there, I got quite a bit of stuff on my table. But I do work every day, so that's part of the problem. Thank you all for helping us. We're always excited and proud of the work we do there. The Association of ONC Counties, we've got a great team. Our staff is dedicated and is incredibly knowledgeable. And again, we appreciate Curry County's involvement in our association. It's very important to us. You all have a good meeting.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Rocky. Good to see you, Tim.
Okay, next is Dee, Curry County, 2022 Fire Season Prepare Preparation.
I need to get back to my things. Real quick, I want to, this is a long presentation, but not, uh-oh. If you can read the years there, this goes back 20 years. These are the major fires. This has to do with drought. I'm not going to go into all that. And we're in, in a very, very dry season right now. Whether you're a climate denier or a climate change believer, the other dry season we, we had in Oregon was in, all through the 1920s and 30s. The reason I just want to show the public and the board real quick this map, you can see how it grows over a 20-year period. And the meeting I was in on yesterday, the Oregon Department of Forestry, it was three hours, they had some incredibly good presentations. But this is a biscuit fire, of course, still remains at half a million acres, the largest fire in Oregon history. And so this is, you can read the years, they're 2000.
21.
Yeah. So we are in a cycle and I had a, thank you, Matt Hall, for printing the fire awareness and just challenging people, encouraging citizens to be aware of what we might be headed for this year. We had five and a half weeks of unbelievably beautiful weather. Early, we got a little bit spoiled, thinking that our snowpack was really going to be solid and the rain flow, the dam was failing for our river and river trips, et cetera. And we still might have a late rain. So there's no panic here, but just to remind the people where we are. The Oregon Republicans in the Senate, I want to read this real quick, Mr. Chair, it's just three paragraphs. Senate Republicans vote to protect Oregonians from the catastrophic wildfires. Salem, Senate Republicans today voted to appropriate 50 million to bolster forest thinning on public lands in an effort to protect Oregonians from catastrophic wildfire. Under Senate Bill 1573, 10 of the most wildfire impacted counties would receive 5 million each to fund thinning operations to decrease fuel loads. Clackamas, DeShues, Douglas Jackson, Josephine, Clamath, Lane, Lincoln Lynn and Marion Counties were included. Little side note, you and I heard from Brenda, Drenda, excuse me, Howitt from AOC wondering if we wanted Curry County to be involved. The, the, and I ended up writing quite a letter to the Senate Committee that is chaired by Senator Gold from the Rogue Valley. The bottom line, well, I'll finish reading this. "We have failed to responsibly manage our forests for decades," said Senator Fred Gerard, Republican Lions. "We can expect catastrophic fires like the one that burnt down my home to get worse until we make management a priority. We must also put our fires instead of just letting them burn. This bill would have been a significant step forward in accelerating our race against the clock. It is disappointing this bill can't even get a debate on the Senate floor. It is estimated the bill could have thinned as much as 100,000 acres across the state." I won't read the rest, but the point is, our state legislature is horribly lacking responsibly prior, responsible priorities. You look at what happened at Labor Day Fire, I have a picture that just shows one mobile home park that's got 80 homes burned in the picture. And I appreciate that you contacted Mrs. or Ms. Howitt of AOC. A lot of the smaller counties that were remarkably left off this bill is beside the point that it didn't even get out of the Natural Resources Committee. There was one or two Democrats that were, were supporting, but not, not enough to get, to get a hearing, hearing. So the Oregon Legislature did appropriate $100 million for childcare, which I support. But to let fire awareness and fuels abatement go unchallenged is just beyond me. And to have, it wasn't just Curry County that was left out of this bill in the short session, it was several other counties that have been tremendously impacted. We can make the case that no county's been more impacted than us, except for we didn't lose the homes. So I'll show this video and the reason I, I think it's important to take this nine minutes, I wanted to keep this under 11 minutes or so. The reason I think it's important is because it can change so fast. People forget, and we've had this discussion, board, I think it's this one right here. We've had this discussion, how quickly our, our, this geography in southwest Oregon dries out. So I think it's a little less than nine minutes. And by the way, Douglas County lost, in the last two years, fire season has lost over 200 homes.
All of the major fires in western Oregon are on east winds. They come over the Cascade Mountains on this west side here and dry out the vegetation. They, if they're occurring during the dry time of the year, they spread fire very easily.
The weather event that happened was so extreme, you talk to many of the people that worked for so long in the woods, it's not something many people have ever seen.
The wind was blowing towards town. So usually the wind there blows up the river, it was blowing the wrong way.
And then came a red flag warning and red flag watch from the National Fire Weather Service.
I mean, winds were in excess of 40 miles an hour, eastern winds, pushing that fire with spotting two to three miles out in front of the active fire line.
It looked like a winter storm had gone through. There were trees blown over, there were branches broken, the highway was just littered with debris. It didn't seem like a September day.
The wind was blowing so hard, there were limbs and, and pieces of tree and pieces of ash that was, I mean, when I say pieces, I'm talking big ones, that were literally flying over our heads.
We had 50 mile an hour winds coming from the east, 95 degree temperatures, single digit humidities. And that combination with the heavy fuels of the forest created an explosive event that was really terrifying to see.
The fires we had on Labor Day were, were major winds, 40, 50 mile an hour gusts. So it created explosive events, just like the 1933 Telemont Fire. The woods literally exploded, a combination of dry fuel, massive amounts of fuel and a heavy east wind.
I've been on a lot of these, I've never really been scared before, but that particular fire was scary. And it was also pitch dark in the middle of the day.
It was, it was bizarre because the sky was so dark, but it was mid afternoon.
And the streetlights at 3:00 in the afternoon were coming on.
The day I walked out and it was pretty much dark and the streetlights were on, I thought, holy cow, you know, I didn't realize what time it was. Well, no, it was actually 2:00 in the afternoon, it wasn't, it wasn't nighttime.
There was a sense of, this is really bad. I've been around fires, I've responded to fires, but this was something that I, I had never seen before. And so there was just this eerie, almost an eerie calm, but strange sense of, there's this giant monster out there.
Uh, yes, I'd like to report a, a fire. It's in between Bogus Creek and Williams Creek off 138.
And you saw the flames?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's burning, it's burning the old Williams Creek Fire's car.
911?
Hi, I'd like to report a forest fire in western county.
Where at?
It is, uh, it's up Canton Creek, east of Glide.
Can I report a fire? Okay, and is this a new fire? Uh, because we have much bigger fires up there. Where are you seeing a fire at?
I am at mile post 38.
In 11100?
There's a wildfire at mile post 37 on 138.
911?
Yeah, we need a chopper sent to Susan Creek, we got a fire, we're trapped in here in Susan Creek Road and it's going across right now, wind's blowing hard, we need help.
I first heard about fires up in the Glide area on, would have been Monday, Monday night, which was Labor Day. We had warnings, you know, there was going to be some high winds. So Tuesday morning, the 8th, we had a report that there was a fire burning up on Forest Service land up the north of Quad, the Bogus Creek area.
And this fire that you're responding to is now referred to as the Archie Creek Fire. About the Archie Creek.
I grabbed one of the county commissioners, Commissioner Freeman, and we decided to take a drive up to Glide and see how the fire was coming, French Creek and go up and take a look at this other fire that the Forest Service was aware they had burning, but at that time, I don't think they had anybody on the fire yet. We encountered a firestorm like I've never seen.
I just knew that we just got a report of another fire. It's, it's Susan Creek Road and Star Mountain Lane moving quickly and they're advising that there is objects dropping.
We first made it up as far as just past Susan Creek up to about the old Frontier Store and that's when we encountered, you know, fire on the hill.
We literally drove up through the fire, there's spots where the rocks are coming down, lots of debris flying around in the air and fire on both sides of the road.
I would have a large call with smoke in the area, still. A little ways out though.
It looks like it's both sides of the road, top of Frontier Hill, just on the east side of it, it's all the way down to the asphalt, they're acting.
We found out that there was some folks that were trapped in their home.
I had a lady drive out in front of me from a driveway and stopped her car, stopped me right in the middle of 138. Now, mind you, the fire was burning all around us right at that time. And she was in a panic because she was concerned that her husband was in the house up the driveway and he was burning to death. That's what they told us.
We have a new fire.
We have a new fire right down here, and a house on fire, and evidently somebody's trapped in it.
We turned the truck around and we headed up the driveway, and the fire was burning all the way around us. It was like driving in a tunnel of flames. We came back down, and we're calling this in on the radio as we go. Our sheriff, when I got back to 138, our sheriff was the first vehicle that came up, and he asked me, which, where's the address of it? And I told him, I said, it's bad up there, I don't know, I don't know that you could survive that. He didn't even hesitate.
And the sheriff drove right in through the fire, up to where the people's house were.
We drove up there and assisted them in getting out of their home, getting out of the fire.
Really not much smoke and fire around them, they really had no idea that the fire was coming up the hill or was about to engulf them.
I have residents who are trapped at 2986, they've both been evacuated, our fire stalled on the residence this time.
Went on up further, up to Benmore Hill, and contacted the residents up there, informed them that they needed to leave. And then we continued up the river further, and that's when we, we really found fire burning, very hot, very erratic, you know, the fire was really blowing up on us on both sides of the highway. We got through it, and about the time we got through it, all the units below us were saying, you know, the road is impassable, you can't go through anymore, we need to stop traffic at both ends and turn people around.
Highway right here is fully engulfed, you please contact ODOT, if KPRC are able to shut down the highway.
It was very dangerous traveling the highway at that time. That was early in the morning, I mean, that was before noon.
Receiving from Star Mountain, west to Hill Creek.
The video's only a minute and 46 seconds. As we get through, we're back into blue sky, like it's just a beautiful summer day, and we were able to help do that evacuation at that end of the fire.
One last comment here. As a public official and all the years that we've been involved, you're always worried about overstating or overemphasizing the risks that we have here. If we'd have got a million dollars for our county, what we would have done with it, I would have immediately come to this board and said, hey, how quickly can we get Goose Forest, Protective Oregon Department of Forestry, US Forest Service together, certainly all of our 13, 14 volunteer fire departments, and decide how we could best spend that money. But what we can say to the citizens, there are things you can do. You can't remove the risk, but you can certainly lessen the level of risk for catastrophic fire and losing your home. And that's, anything close to your home is combustible, remove it, get help, call us, we will, we'll do anything we can. I do expect, we've had three fire seasons now where we've been pretty fortunate compared to 2017 and 18, but there are things we can do, and the sooner we get started is why I'm doing this in March. And yeah, I'm hoping for rain, but again, there are just things that we can do to make a difference and, again, lower the risk level that Curry County's quite famous for. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions?
No, that's a good presentation. Anthony, could you, I don't have my internet, if you could unplug that and get that to me. So let's move on now, we thank you for all those presentations, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Got a second, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You can pull back some. Court, do I got a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Wrong one.
No, this one. Sorry, guys. Thanks, Anthony.
Keep going.
Yeah, that's good, right there. So motion carries three to zero. Discussion action items, Curry County's liability to loss due to current events, Commissioner Pash?
Well, I kind of want to talk to the public about some of the things that we deal with here and that I'm dealing with personally. And I want to say that what I'm gonna say, I take no pleasure in doing. My wife and I have actually prayed about this. I have worked my entire life to do the right thing, and not always succeeding, but I've circled back to do, to correct many of the wrongs from my childhood to now. I believe that God is the most important person that I need to worry about doing right and wrong with. But a reputation in your community is imperative, especially if it involves what you do for a living. In horse racing, I spent 20 some odd years in horse racing along with my wife, and we fought for a drug-free national policy when no one else would, and now there is a drug-free, almost drug-free policy nationwide. Since that time, I have fought for a foundation with my wife Bonnie, and I have, that we formed here in Curry County called Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation. It's a Christian foundation that tries to help kids. And in that, again, reputation is everything. Especially if you need community and want community support. Along with that, when I was asked, I ran for the office of County Commissioner in hopes of doing some good things for Curry County and building back the trust that I felt had been lost in our local government and with our constituents. One of the hardest things I found to do in Curry County as a commissioner is to separate the public office part of our job from personal feelings and a decision, and truly look at both sides of that decision, to approve or disprove, and make sure that it was for the best, for the most people that it would affect in this county. Since that time, I have continued to watch time and time again, good people in this county that work for this county and their reputations being stepped, what I call stepped on. Some of the horrible things that have been said about employees in this county and the constant threats made to their jobs is overwhelming. It seems to come in waves for a few weeks, and then all of a sudden it'll dissipate. But then again, a new target is chosen, and it begins again. To hear the constant blatant disgust from some voiced in executive session, while in open session, people are very different. Well, now the target has been again placed on me. And what I want the public to know is it does me no good to be discussing this, but I feel it is imperative that the public knows. I watch Commissioner Boyce, some of the reputation and some of the friendships that he's formed, not only in our county, but in the state and federal government, and I see the good work that he's done, and he's done some really good work, and he's made some great friends and reputations. But in the last several weeks, I personally have endured attacks from Commissioner Boyce. Some were just words, like telling me that I was the cause of someone's death. But now he has put in, now he has put in writing in a letter to someone in the public that I am a corrupt official. To me, my reputation is imperative, and those words cannot be taken lightly. The word corrupt in the dictionary says, having or showing a willingness to act dishonestly in return for money or personal gain. To accuse me of a crime in a letter to the public is a very serious charge, and there were other charges in that letter as well, but to me, this is the important one. It's a very serious charge that I would guess would not be looked at lightly by our public. After I'm done reading this, if I am corrupt, I am asking Commissioner Boyce to tell me what I have done. I want to know what I did and whoever did it with me that is guilty of corruption, so guilty that he made it known to the public. The public has a right to know this, and if I am corrupt and have done something illegal as he states I have, I want to know who has been involved in the scheme with me and what we did. And I also want the public to know this, this is constantly going on in this county with Commissioner Boyce. It is and continually does accuse people of not doing their jobs, berating their performances, threatening to fire them. He tells others to do the work that he should be doing, all while taking the credit for it. He accuses others of wasting money, but approves financial decisions liberally if they fit him, and tells the people he is watching every dollar he's spending while spending money on things not advised. Commissioner Boyce, you were censored in 2019 to head off a public liability as it was recommended by CIS, who was our insurer, and their attorneys with county employees. What you have done this time is again put this county in a liability. You have publicly written in a mail that another elected official, who is me, is corrupt. After a conversation with CIS, they cannot protect the county, and neither can county counsel, as he has optioned out. So if my attorneys want me to go through with a lawsuit against the county, as you wrote this on county letterhead, and a lawsuit against you personally, as they have recommended, and a jury were to find against you, it would cost this county a large sum. To accuse me of things, to accuse me of the things you have in the past few years, I've gotten used to. But to tell me that I am the cause of someone's death, and now public corruption, for me is my limit. Commissioner Boyce, I believe you are a good man. To all of us out there who know you as public hellos in your smiles, you are a person that most of us, including me, want as a friend. But to know you as the man I see here behind closed doors, and the lengths that you are willing to go to make yourself look good while running right over the top of other people, in my opinion, is immeasurable. I really want you to be a friend, I want to know the friend that I met several years ago. But I think you being in this office has changed you into a man I can forgive, but I will never be a friend to you again. So the floor is yours now, but first, please answer my question to the public. What did I and whoever it was that did it with me do that was corrupt, so corrupt that you decided to notify someone in the public that I had done it? That's all I have, sir. So can we start, Commissioner Pash? This should have been a public, open agenda item. So I had no warning that this was coming. I could offer you one thing, just one of several. You and Treasure Barnes called an illegal meeting on March 3rd, when I think I had, what, 11 minutes warning? So no 24-hour notice to the public. I come in as chair, I mean, why don't we, why don't we just get all this out in the open? And to hear you say, give me some evidence that I suggested that your behavior, your conduct caused a death. What death are we talking about? Some camp host? You've said it twice in executive session, that I am the reason, I'm part of the reason she's dead. False, false. The tapes will speak for themselves. Well, let's get the tapes out to the public. What I did say, if we'd have had an investigation, I honest to gosh believe the way this county treated that poor woman, she'd still be alive. That's what I believe. You said no to the investigation, and we could have got all this out in the open. So it's easy for you to come before the public now with a big surprise, make a bunch of generalities and rhetorical statements with no evidence whatsoever, no willingness to get that evidence. The evidence speaks for itself, sir. Well, why don't you provide that, sir? Why don't you offer that to the public, and let's see who is corrupt and who is not corrupt? I challenge you on that. These investigations that I asked for time and time again would have cleared all of our names if we deserved to be cleared. That's all I have to say, except I'm gonna have a presentation now that you've brought this up, as soon as my attorneys say it's okay, all right? If that's the way you want to take it, take this route, unfortunately, it's the line you've drawn into the sand. It's just like today, I was accused on the Rogue Siski Regional Fire Training Center of overstepping my bounds. Nobody come to my defense, knowing that I've brought that to this board, the Gold Huxley Board, the Pash Gold Board, the Pash Herzog Boards, I've brought it all, fully keeping you informed, and to be said that I appointed myself, it's just absolutely false. But I've been dealing with that day after day, week after week, month after month. So yeah, I've got just a little bit of feisty attitude in me because I've been falsely accused, and that's easy to prove and I already have. Constantly falsely accused, and the damage it's done to this county, the amount of staff time and money it's caused this county is appalling. Yeah, I bet it's all you got to say. Well, I'll have my report either on the 16th or April 6th, and I'll make sure that it's publicly, properly notified, so we make and abide by, comply with the proper laws. I won't hit somebody blindside like this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. 6B, use of EIN employer tax ID number Dunn's, David Barnes.
I'll be back in one second, I gotta go grab my phone.
Well, we could go real quick, he does that to E. That is a request for ARP funding, that has my name on it. At last meeting, I said I would follow up with contacting a source in North County for funds to be used at ARP for food, and that is, I got ahold of Common Good, and got a letter, and you both have a copy of that letter, and Common Good, 5013C out of Port Orford, since 1981, with the purpose of feeding the hungry in our community. We have served the North County area ever since. Part of the letter I highlighted, we also share our food with the library after school and summer programs, with the 2 CJ School District Programs and Kids, the Meals on Wheels Program, the Senior Center, and Head Start, also coastal community health. So in my mind, I thought that was a good opportunity that we could give $10,000 out of ARP funds for Common Good of Port Orford. It's, I mean, they share with everybody, and they have served.
Clarification.
Between 500 and 900 individuals each month, and over the 400 households, it's just, yeah, they are a good outfit, so.
But that's what we voted on, didn't we, on the 16th of February?
Well, we didn't have anybody, so this is...
But we just, we did vote, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be, we did vote to, based on the population percentage, 60,000 went to Brookings, 28,000 to Gold Beach for the Gold Beach Community Center, and then 10,000 to the Food Bank, so you're saying that's Common Good?
Well, this is the one that I thought hit every part, because they...
I agree.
They distribute food and then they share with others, those other community, those other helpers that, if they're low, so.
I believe we've already voted on that, but again, I could be wrong. We did, we never put a name on it, so if that's the name that'll be on it, then that's fine. So I think we're in agreement there.
Do we need another motion, do you think, Anthony, or what are you thinking?
It'd be safe, too, just, I can get you guys in order.
Well, a move that we appropriate the 10 million, 10,000 that we discussed for North County at the February 16th meeting, to Common Good. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and any other discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, guys. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, guys. Couple of other things, David, and we'll get right to you. We just jumped ahead. There's a hold on the Christian Help building right across the street with a roof project. I talked to Steve Volunteer over there and Nancy Sorenson yesterday because they have a leaky roof, but the people who put the roof on are still in contact with them, so they might get that fixed. If not, I'll be bringing back another ask there to get that roof coated. My other ask is Gold Beach Main Street, 25,000 for the feasibility study of Gold Beach Main Street. And Lori's here to answer any questions and. Sure. Yeah, no one, nope.
So just really quickly, David asks a couple of really good questions and requested information, but I first want to thank you for being, all three of you for being such good stewards of this money. It's obvious your hearts in the right places and I appreciate your cautiousness and doing things appropriately. But I just want to reiterate quickly.
Lori, would you pull that microphone around? I don't know how in the world it got over there. Thank you.
Is this, is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to reiterate quickly that this final rule that came down January the 6th was done with USA Main Street with the federal government and they worked together to make sure that the definition was broadened. I can read the, one of the three statements that's been made that I'm gonna give to Dave, I'd like to give it to you also. And it says, "Build strong, resilient and equitable, make strong, resilient and equal recovery by marketing investments that support long-term growth." That is one of the stipulations for money spent. So I want to be clear on that. And David asked, what is the feasibility? Well, it is what Florence did, they did a feasibility to define the scope of the job and the expense and they followed it and managed it from beginning to end. They're an engineering company that has proven themselves credible in the Northwest. So what we want to do is take urban renewal dollars, Ford dollars, Wild River Coast Alliance, Bannon Dunes dollars, private citizens and businesses, and lastly, now you, the county. Combine that money, it will allow us to do a very extensive feasibility study, have town hall meetings, define what we want the scope to be, and move forward with the job. So with that said, I'm hoping you're gonna vote on it and support us. So thank you.
Well, I just want everyone to know that without a feasibility study, nothing like this can be done. That's pretty much.
Right on, yep.
But what I would like to ask, and Commissioner Boyce, if you wouldn't mind, please, putting up the financial page there that Brad showed earlier and the ARP money, I think it was the first page on that report. The ARP allocations. I might have been looking here, my mic's on, isn't it?
We want you to read every line, Ms. Van Zandt.
No, I just wanted to see something on there, on a forward topic. What I'd like to know, Lori, if you could, how much money have you raised already?
Great question. We are, I should just be able to glance at it. Once we get the finalization from the Ford Family Foundation, we will be at $65,000, well, $70,000, $70,000. So we know that Florence was three quarters of a mile long and it cost over $100,000 to do the feasibility and get everything in place to start going after the dollars.
So this would put you over the 100, then?
This would put us at 95. So, close enough.
Okay, that's the only questions I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think we're pretty enthused. And you made a great presentation earlier. Your group has been absolutely stalwart. You know where I get just a little bit stuck?
Sure, sure.
The other parts of the county.
Yes.
Now, Brookings doesn't have a main street.
No.
And Port Orford is.
And they do have a lot of underground power already.
I gave you a great opening there.
Yes, you did.
But that's good.
Yeah.
Port Orford has a main street program.
We had an opportunity to do underground power when they did and we turned it down.
Okay, all right.
FYI.
I just, in some fashion, I think we just have a real responsibility. We still have 900,000 left. I kind of want to slow things down a little bit because I mentioned last meeting. I'm ready to vote today on this, but I want to slow things down just a little bit because we've discussed, we have till 2024 to, I mean, we can obligate any funds we want now, but we have till 2024 to initiate those funds. And so I'm just a little bit nervous that we move fast and we bring one item at a time to the board. And what I would recommend, even if we do vote today, I would recommend that maybe April 6th, I don't know if the 16th is, we can get it done. But we really need to regroup. We're learning every day as we go. We've had the Treasurer give us some challenges, understandably. So I just want to get a handle on this. And I thought that Finance Director Ricker did a good job today outlining those individual funds and getting the notices in. Cutting to the short here, sorry, that definitely took too long. But I think we need to just slow down a little bit and move towards a next meeting, really either having a workshop or, and I think we need to come to agreement, come to an agreement on the different sections of the county and if we want to do those reasonable percentages. That's all I have.
Okay. I just can make a little side note here, and that is seeing some of these appropriated dollars, the 10 billion that Wyden has passed a bill on, is already starting to be allocated. So a feasibility study takes seven to nine months to get done. And we, Gold Beach Main Street will not start it until we have our funds in place. And so I just want to make that note. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve $25,000 to Gold Beach Main Street for the purpose of feasibility study for Underground ADA and all the study to move forward with Gold Beach Main Street project.
I'll second that.
Any comment or question?
Excuse me, qualify it as ARP money, please?
Qualify it as, yes, ARP money, well, sorry, ARP money to Gold Beach Main Street. No questions? All in favor say yes? Yes?
Yes. I'm glad to hear two yes votes. I would have voted affirmatively, but I need to abstain from this because Lori and I have a relationship that someone might be able to throw sand on, so. As neighbors, so I'm glad I went through, it would have went through three to zero, but I will abstain.
Okay. Motion carries two to, two to two to one with an abstention.
I'm trying to figure that out, too.
Because an abstention, yeah, and that's okay, so, perfect. David, next up is, or is there anybody else before, prior to that? Yeah, we're gonna postpone that Christian Help roofing right now. Chet, yours is coming up, so.
Anthony?
That's the last, just the point of Chet was trying to get our attention, so.
Yep.
I have two in a row here, but I'll start with the first one. It's the use of the county's EIN, Duns and SAM numbers. In the paper I submitted to this, EIN's our employee number, Duns is our Dun &amp; Brad Street number, and SAM is Assistant for Award Management. We have no current, I'm not aware of any control that we have over use of these by people right now. Different departments are able to use them to put in for grants. Essentially, what these are is they're numbers that will reflect our financial worthiness and credit worthiness going forward. So I want to advise caution in just using these and I would really like to see a central point, be it my office or somewhere else, that people, before they use these numbers on applications, come and just check in and let me know that it's happening, let somebody know that it's happening. This came up because of a grant application that I saw the other day that was just, I don't think anybody knew about it, I didn't know about it beforehand, but our Duns number is on it. So I just have concern, we're talking about it right now, we're talking about putting in a new courthouse across the street and we're gonna have to bond for that. And my concern is that without having more control over what department's doing, what the three commissioners do, that when we go to issue a bond for this, I'm scared to death that we're gonna end up, instead of issuing a bond at 2%, we're gonna end up getting tagged for 7% which is a difference between a million and 3.5 million on our interest payments on our bond. So I just, I'd like to, I don't have an order prepared, I don't really have a full ask out of this, but what I would like, what I would like the commissioners to do right now is to agree that there needs to be some kind of control over what happens with our financial worthiness, you know, with our credit worthiness, and that somebody's office has to be watching it, either the Finance Department or my office, one or the other. But I just, I would like to ask for your consideration on that. Perhaps we can bring it up again at another meeting next month, have an order prepared by then. But for now, I would just like to open a discussion on it.
Any question?
Well, I just, I agree on this. These are all for credit ratings and the ratings that we'll be able to get, if we get taken down, a five-star, you know, from AAA to AA, even from AAA to AA, that's huge over the amateurization of a bond or a loan, so. I think there should have to be some, I don't like government oversight, but I think there should have to be some oversight on anytime these numbers are gonna be used, that someone in Finance knows about it.
Thank you.
Finance and Council?
Well, it's more of a financial issue. I would be hoping I could take a look at those grant agreements before they go out, but have a separate issue.
So maybe an email to all departments?
If I might, sir, I was speaking with Monica Ward, no relation, the other day and she mentioned to me, we have a shared drive that when I went and looked in it, there's a folder in the shared drive called Grant Writing. But nothing has been put into that since 2015, 2016. If people would go in when they're going to do something, if we would reinstitute a policy where if you're gonna put in a grant, you post the application on the shared drive. You know, you notify Finance, you notify Treasurer, and you put the application up on the shared drive so that we were able to go in and look at it. And, you know, just something like that. I mean, like I said, I was speaking to Monica and she mentioned this to me that it would be a good tracking area that we could use, you know, create a folder in there that says Grant Apps. And, you know, and something like that, just so that we're aware of it. You know, like I said, right now, we don't really, I don't know what's going on, I don't know who's putting in, who's using it for what. And that's no way to run a business. You need to know what's happening.
That's actually a great way, because then you got full transparency of the board, the public, and for the grant writer, it's just a matter of pointing and, you know, copy and paste into that file. So it's no extra time and labor.
Sounds good. Court, you had a question?
Thank you. Council Pope, did I just hear a commitment from you to be a secondary backup on this?
No, he said Finance.
Well, according to the county contracting rules, any grant before it's submitted should come through my office just for a quick review. And so I'd say not so much.
What stage is that grant, though, the application?
It should be before it's sent, then.
Okay. It's finished here and before.
So that's in the contracting rules, if you guys would like to change that, you know, we can look at that, but that's how it's written right now. And it's not me trying to determine if it's a good grant or a bad grant, it's basically just making sure it's legally sufficient.
Thank you.
If you would, if you want, excuse me, I'm sorry. If you wanted to include language after that, that it goes before Finance and Treasurer also, that would be, that would be acceptable resolution as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Mr. Chair? You mentioned in the agenda writing slip that somebody had applied for a grant. Do you want to let the public know who that grant is?
I, what I was, I received an email last week about a COVID, I don't remember the acronym, but it's $500,000 that was coming from that Dallas Senator Hurd had earmarked towards Curry County for the Wildland Fire Training Center. And I was unaware, I thought that that was for the Wildland Fire Training Center, which is not a county project that I knew of at the time. But as we found out yesterday, Mr. Herzog and I, on Monday or Tuesday, met with Chief Krieger and Counsel and Cam Parry, who let us know that the way that it was, the way that the grant is written up and processed is that it has to come through the county and then be distributed to the Wildland Fire Training Center. SRS, Siskiyou Rogue.
Rogue Siskiyou Regional Fire and Emergency.
RSR, that's, okay, sorry.
So, but, so is there actually a grant being applied for that used county numbers?
On that grant application, I saw our county numbers, yes.
Okay, and that was from, was that from Riverdocks or?
No, that was, what I saw came to me from, through you, from DAS.
Wow, I'm completely unaware and I've been very much involved for three years on that. So I'll do some research, thank. Why you couldn't be transparent in your ARS because it was a bit baffling? Or it just, I think it's just good to let the public know and then, and we can get it fixed.
Okay, yeah, you know, that's why I asked earlier. There's, yes, if you look at the email that you sent out, I believe it was last Monday, a week ago Monday, the 21st or the 22nd, there was four attachments on that email and one of them was the grant application. And on that, it listed our EIN number, our Duns number on that application.
So that would have been from DAS, Oregon Department of Administrative Services, picked up our employer identification number and all that?
We don't, I have no idea how the contact was, I do not know how that happened.
Well, I think that would have been automatic, but it would be good to know.
Yes, it was.
Automatic from their office.
They don't have access to our number, nor should they be using our number without our permission.
I agree with the second part, but of course they have access to our numbers, it's public knowledge.
Our Duns number certainly, I don't believe it is.
Well, show us.
Like, that'd be like putting your credit card number out in the public as far as I can see.
I was primarily hung up on the employer identification number, so we might both be right, might both be wrong, or you might be correct there, so thank you.
Okay. All right, so we got a, we got a direction?
Thank you.
This doesn't need a motion or anything, Anthony?
Not right now.
All right, thanks.
We got one more, right?
Well, I was gonna, Chet, come on in here real quick.
I'm next, too.
Well, I was gonna, if you could sit down for one second.
Sure.
Chet is a maintenance guy and he needs to get to work because there's a leak everywhere in this building. So if you can hand those out real quick. So this was on the agenda that never got really spoken to, thanks, Chet. Yeah, so this is a UVC robot.
All right, thank you.
And Chet, go ahead and speak to this. It was on the agenda last month and we.
I put it in the wrong order, whatever place it was supposed to be for a discussion, and it was recommended that we bring it back to try and bring it out for discussion and understanding, comprehension.
This is not on the agenda, though, correct?
Well.
It should be.
It should be. I fail to, I have it on mine and I failed to tell you guys.
So it's no big deal. Let's do it properly for the 16th. This last-minute stuff at 20 minutes to noon, this board does that a lot. I don't mean to point a finger, but it is, yeah, we get a packet and he waits out here for a half hour. Not necessary. We can do better, guys. We can do better.
We can, and I apologize, I should, I was on there and I should have highlighted it to add it. I was just gonna add it under ARP funding.
If it's something I did, I apologize, I just, I thought it was gonna be continued over.
You didn't do anything.
Even if there were mistakes, that's not the point. We all make mistakes. It's the public needs to know this did properly go on an AR agenda writing slip for the 16th of February. We had to table it because we had a very busy meeting and other reasons. But no, there's no urgency here. We all need time to reexamine this. Public needs to see it, bring it before the board on the 16th.
Okay. Is that a, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Chet, are you okay, well, you're okay with it if we say you're okay with it.
Tell me I'm okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry about that, bud. We will bring that back officially on the 16th. David Barnes, Rescue Plan Administration. So just as a prerequisite to this, all the administration that we've done with ARP funds so to this point have been in-house and so it's a lot easier to distribute. And now we're, we've actually made some. And now, we're, we've actually made some decisions to send money to folks, and now we need this, what Dave is gonna talk about, a administration of how to, you know, do this correctly, and, anyway, go ahead, Dave.
Yes, thank you, sir. What I, my, when I put in the agenda routing slip for this, I had envisioned the deputy treasurer becoming full-time and taking this over as part of her responsibilities. But since then, her and I have spoken, and personal reasons, she's not ready to become full-time yet. But I believe that she, this is still a task that is well within her scope of experience and expertise to handle. In the seven months that she's been here, she's really proven herself to be an asset, and I would like to expand her responsibilities a little bit more. When we start sending money out to outside people, like the Main Street Group, like the food banks and things like that, there's reporting requirements that come along with that. We have to, first, we would have to have an agreement drawn up with these people that they will apply, that they will abide by the rules, and those are the US Treasury rules. Counsel Pope's Assistant Rabia has done a remarkable job, even though not asked to do so. She has put together quite the compendium of ARP requirements and applications-
Not surprised.
Pendium, I've never heard that one.
You don't do crossword puzzles like I do. It's a regular New York Times crossword puzzle.
Like a pendymocytus, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Your stomach doesn't feel good.
But no, she, there's quite a volume of work that's involved with tracking these, making sure that people are reporting right, getting the numbers into the United States Treasury. There's requirements that the subrecipients have, but as, as we are the recipient organization, we are the ones responsible for reporting back on how this money's spent and collecting bills. Essentially, it's no different than an expense report, where you go out, you spend money, and you submit your bills afterwards. And that's what it is, you know, I, between Ms. Cochran and myself, I believe that it's something that we can easily keep on top of and take care of, but before we start sending money out, we need to have these things in place. Rabia went out and she provided samples of two different cities or counties that, they're subrecipient agreement forms that we can easily adapt to being for our own uses. And then it becomes a copy and paste, put in the numbers, put in the name, and we go forward from there. And, you know, like, like we were talking earlier, you know, grants aren't free money, they, you know, there's work that you have to get to them, you know. So we, we really need to make sure that we're on top of this, as I said a few meetings ago. Messing this up, it jeopardizes all of our federal money, and that's not only ARP, that's SRS, that's PILT money, that's other federal money that we get in the county, so we wanna make sure that we do this right when we do it. And, you know, towards that purpose, you know, I would like to, I would like the board to agree today to name Callie as our ARP administrator, and, you know, let her run with this. She, like I said, she's proven herself in a few months that she's been here, and I would like to just see that happen.
Question?
Well, I have several questions, I've looked at this. Mr. Barnes, is this a full-time position, the ARP administrator?
I don't believe it is, I believe it blends in with her other duties, though.
But you, you've kinda said that in your ARP slip, maybe I misinterpreted, but it's gonna be a paid, full-time position.
No, sir, she does not, she is requested not to become full-time at this time.
Okay, but you, you said a job description, and you had the payment salary level, and that comes to, I think, $46,000 a year, is what you're recommending?
I believe.
Okay, and she's getting $20 an hour now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And you put in, you recommended a raise for her not too long ago, and I think the board was somewhat-
Excuse me?
I think you recommended a raise to her?
No.
You said she was gonna run for treasurer maybe at some point?
I, I might have said that, but I do not recall ever asking for her to get a raise.
Okay, my mistake, but I-
Although she deserves one.
But that's where I'm coming from, because I think you communicated along those lines, and you just said it again a bit ago that she has gone above and beyond, and I think there's general agreement with that. Do you, are we on the same page now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I asked if this ARP is a full-time position, and with the price raise, that would come to where it would cost the taxpayer about $71,000 a year with employment money, so it is a new position. You just mentioned Ms. Lee has done a lot of the work under Counsel Pope's program, and so I think this is something we should possibly look at at contracting, and maybe she would be that person to do it, if it was part-time. And I certainly wouldn't be opposed to looking at that. I appreciate that you picked up on the subrecipient graft, excuse, graft, draft agreement? And do you have that written yet, or even in partial form yet?
I have to give credit where it's due, Rabia is the one who went out and found copies of that from other organizations. We have not, once I, once I get a determination from you, then I can work on creating one for Curry County.
Great, that helps a lot. And would she still have the title of deputy treasurer?
Yes, she would.
And do you still feel like the treasurer's a two-person job?
Yes, I do.
So are you gonna need another deputy?
No, sir.
Okay, but that's three positions, with the added ARP. I'm not insensitive to the added ARP responsibilities, and I, but I'm thinking Ms. Lee could handle that 10 hours a week, or? I'm just making a wild guess here.
It's not a legal department position, I think Anthony would agree with me on that, this is more of a finance and treasury position.
Yeah, but we're all, we're all a team here, and she already on her own did some significant work that you just referenced, so. I mean, I think she's very capable of, you know, small county dovetailing on different responsibilities.
I, I'm not willing to offer her services up without speaking to her first.
Well, that's why I looked at Counsel Pope a bit ago, could you wanna weigh in on that, if she would have the time, the interest?
It's something I, yeah, I'll talk to her first, and then I can come back and report to you guys.
Just about done here. I mentioned that we could, you know, possibly contract this out, because it's only gonna be for, what, three years additional? Maybe four till we get-
Four, probably.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's, that's an aspect that I think we'd wanna consider. And I don't want anything that I'm saying today to think that her services haven't been appreciated, and, you know, I don't know if I've been admired yet, I went, I just walked by her office one day and she's got stacks of papers on the floor, so neatly organized, I mean, I was, I was quite envious, and I think rather impressed, but you know, I think that's all, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna vote on this, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this today, because it creates another full-time position, and I'm a little bit unsure.
I don't think it does.
Excuse me, as I said, I'm withdrawing the portion of this that makes her full-time.
Yeah, there is no, that's off the table.
That's, making her full-time is off the table, she is requested not to be, so, you know.
Did we talk to her about contract, then?
I have not.
In the interest of where this county is financially?
What it would be, would be adding, I don't know how to say this the right way, it's just adding duties to what she already does while she's here. So, go ahead, please.
So, what I gather from what you're saying is, she's, she's part-time, and she's basically going to remain part-time, but you're going to add to her duties, and it may, this may constitute another three to five hours a week of her job duties or whatever.
Correct.
And you wanna make sure that you have a budget to handle, in other words, a supplemental budget to your budget to handle the excessive time that she's going to devote to this, is all you're asking?
Correct, I just, she, I'm not looking to make her full-time, I don't, we're not gonna add the, all the benefit package, the cost of the benefits package onto it, it's just expanding her out a little bit further than where she is now. You know, she's-
I would even recommend, at the next meeting, prior to the next meeting, talking to Rabia and Callie, and they work very well together, and they, they get along really well, so that might be an option, too.
Based on that, for me?
With those duties, yeah.
Based on that, I think that's a good idea, I would delay the vote today.
Yeah.
And your clarification helps me a lot, too, 'cause what I hear you saying, we're not gonna have the heavy employment cost related.
Correct. From where we stand now, I don't see us getting a county like Multnomah, or some, a large county might get dozens or hundreds of applications from outside groups looking for money. We're not gonna get that many, I mean, we had, what, 12 in the first batch? We have three or four more that are pending, I think. So it's not, you know, in a bigger county with more people and more money, yes, it is a full-time position in a lot of counties, but we're small, I don't believe it is, you know, it's not here, and as I said, it's just, it's, we need, the Gold Beach Food Bank needs money soon, so they can-
That's my concern.
So that they can get out and get, and keep providing meals, so that their Meals on Wheels and Homebound Meals can keep, keep going.
Yeah, but the vote today is not holding that up.
Well, it is, because we don't have a, we don't have an administrator.
Right, I need the paperwork, I need to, my, what I would like to see happen today is that between Callie, Rabia, and myself, come up with a, an agreement that is palatable, and I get your permission today that if Anthony approves of the subrecipient agreement as to legal forum and to legal protection for this county, that we be able to go to people like the Meals on Wheels people and have them sign this and put money in their hands. You know, we need to get money, there's some of these people, they don't have the money that they can advance, advance out of their own pockets to go out and provide Meals on Wheels services. They need money from us to provide that, and I don't wanna delay that anymore. I understand that they're in a financial pinch, and they could really use this money to keep their service going. There's, I don't remember the numbers, but I know that there's a lot of people who they serve in this city.
Yeah, so that's my, that's my thing, too, Dave, is let's, we just gotta get to where we can write that check and get it to the folks. We have always, it's been all inter-agency or all in-county, and now we need to get it to the people who need it quickly. Chris?
I'll make a motion that we approve, you know, the additional hours that it takes for Callie to administrate on the ARP funds, and work in agreement with Rabia and County Council on this as well.
I'd just like to bring it back on the 16th, or go with the suggestion you just made, just get with Counsel Pope and Ms. Cochran, and so I'm gonna oppose, and Ms. Lee, and come up with, the board needs to see the subrecipient agreement with the county, and it sounds like you've already made a little progress on that, so I, I'm gonna vote oppose today so we can just get going.
Yeah, we have a motion open, so we'll just wait for a second.
I'm gonna second it for, and now we'll go to discussion. Anthony, do we need a motion to do this subservient thing?
It would be good to add that to the motion, too, actually, that way, just gives us, you know, kind of preapproval for it.
Yeah, so, Commissioner Bash, would you be willing to amend, or just amend your agenda to say, nothing about hours or anything, just that these folks would get a subterranean agreement?
Subrecipient.
Subrecipient.
Subterranean was homesick loons.
That was yesterday's rain.
So amended, so amended.
Okay, I'll second that, does that?
Yes, I'm very-
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Four minutes to noon, we have, the last one is Budget Committee Appointment Review, 6F on your agenda.
And yeah, just a really quick background, although you guys are aware of this, in January, we had a resignation from the Budget Committee from the central area. As soon as we received that resignation, JJ noticed a call for applications for anybody who may wanna serve. In the February 2nd meeting, the board appointed Brad Alcorn to fill that position just for the remainder of this year. In the meanwhile, we've received two more applications, so I just wanted to bring those to the board's attention. And just kind of a quick reminder, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that I looked into the, you know, legality of appointing Brad, and there was no issues with him serving in that, in that position, if that's what the board ordered.
So there was nothing that said we have to have one person out of each county, or a, you know?
That's right, well, yeah, it was outlined in an order in 2019 that that's kinda how it would be done, but
Yeah.
A board order from the past can be overruled with a current board order, so it's kinda, either way, how you guys wanna proceed.
So right now, we have two gentlemen out of South County, Brookings, Oregon, as Budget Committee members, one out of Port Orford, Douglas Baker, right, still? The man with two county names, Douglas Baker. And so the question before us is, you know, we've appointed, with a motion and a second, and I think it was unanimous that we appoint Brad as stepping in. And now we have two appointees, or two applications out of Central County, and I get, you know, do we?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have three, we have three incredibly well-qualified candidates. You know, we're sitting here with responsibility to try and take care of each section of the county. We didn't have that option, there was quite a rush to vote prior, and we've had discussion on that. I didn't, I didn't like that approach, and I voiced my opinion on that. So here we are today, we're way ahead of sched, not, excuse me, we're a little bit ahead of schedule for the budget season approaching, so now we have two qualified candidates, I couldn't begin to guess how I'm gonna vote. One has got a tremendous CPA background, and one has served before and did very well. And they're both from Central Curry, so I think the first thing we have to do is determine if we want to abide by reasonable rules that we've, that the boards have used for years. Sometimes if they didn't have a person for a certain committee from one of the three regions, they would go out and look everywhere they could to find that person, so they could abide by that. So I think that's the honorable thing to do, I think it sends a good message to the public. Brad is running, Brad Alcorn is running for County Commissioner. You know, I think he, knowing him, he'll probably wanna be here for the budget season anyway, if we do take one of these Gold Beach people. And, you know, I would certainly welcome him, he was chair, did a great job, and so I'd like to pull one of these other people in, and I'm indifferent to which one, 'cause I think they're both incredibly qualified, if we decide to first honor and abide by the regional approach to filling these committee positions.
Question?
No, I don't have a question, I have more of a statement, I just, I'm I can't imagine that we would even consider change, making the changes we've made. We start our Budget Committee meetings, I believe, next week, or 10 days from now. Mr. Alcorn has served as chair on that board for, or that committee for the last couple of years. He's very up to speed on it, he knows right where the county is on our finances. He's already preparing, he's, I've been in conversation with him in the last couple of weeks, he's preparing already. And I just, I would be surprised to see, it was a temporary appointment, because we had no one. So, at the time that, again, at the time that this county needed someone to step up, Brad Alcorn said, "I am here and I will serve", not a problem. And now we're gonna look at him and say, "Well, we really appreciate you stepping up at that time, but we got somebody else now, and we're gonna put him in there." I understand what this board did in 2019, because we had some issues, and we decided to have a whole new Budget Committee come in. But this has already been done, it's been in place, voted on by the board unanimously, and to now look at someone that's, again, preparing for this and have that happen, I just, wow, what are we saying, what are we saying to the public?
Mr. Chair?
Just a second, I got, I gotta, I was thinking, you know, 'cause this, this is definitely something to ponder. We asked Brad, you know, asked Brad to step in, and he did, and he knows it's a one-year thing. Would it be possible, Counsel Pope, to vote on one of these two gentlemen that have application in, and let them sit on the board also, or on that committee also this year?
Uh, no, the, or it's to state that there has to be an equal number of commissioners and Budget Committee members, so we can only have three.
'Cause my thought is the same as Chris's, in the fact that you don't ask somebody to do something and vote on it, I think it was a unanimous vote. I think it was a unanimous vote, and then say, "Oh, no, that, that didn't sit with me." Very good. So, oh, man.
Do I have another?
I have one more.
I was next.
Go ahead.
Okay, but, you know, gentlemen, I, I actually got a phone call. I said that it's very important that noon, if, can we, oh, I just lost it. Anyway, uh-
So here, I'll make it real fast. When that was brought before this board a month ago, there was no 24-hour notice, and that's part of the illegal process, use whatever term you want, maybe it was an oversight. This has nothing to do with, we didn't ask Brad to come onboard, you did, okay? So I fully supported him. This is very sloppy. That was a month ago. We have had two qualified people come up. I'll go whatever the board wants to do, but I'm disappointed the way this whole thing has been handled.
One more quick comment. If it was an illegal thing, I would assume that our County Council would have told me, or this board, "This is illegal, we cannot do this."
Do you think it was improper?
Can I, can I finish? If these two people wanted to be on the Budget Committee, there was a, a window open for them to submit applications for consideration to be on the Budget Committee. They did not submit applications. Mr. Alcorn and another individual did. This board's already seated, Mr. Alcorn, and I, I hope we, we stay with that. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner? What happened there was a late withdrawal by Budget Committee member Krieger. I can tell you the day. So almost immediately after, he said, "This, you brought it before the board, last minute on a day without public notice." I don't, and my point is, sir, you didn't have to do that. We could have opened up, and we did open up, and we got two applicants. There was not enough time from the original way this was handled. That's why I'm just-
Yeah, but we voted, I mean, that, that's, that's the sticking point for me. Quickly or slowly, we, as a board, said, "You'll, you'll be our interim for one year, this year."
If you're happy and you want to keep Brad Alcorn on, I'm, I'm not going to be a bit, I'm, I'm content there also. We'll, we'll just let it go. I've made my, I've made my cause for what-
And we got some, we got some hands from the public. Dave was first.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, as, as Commissioner Pash said, when I found out that Ed Schreiber was on the Bud, was going to be on the Budget Committee, I spoke to Mr. Alcorn also, and he expressed Mr. Schreiber's interest in how, but he was afraid of being a babe in the woods and not, and not knowing things. So I reached out to Mr. Schreiber and to Mr. Alcorn, and I brought them in here one day. We spent a couple of hours, myself, Director Rickert, Senior Account Manager Crooks, and my deputy met with them for about two hours one day to give them, to talk about the budget, you know, and to talk about what's coming up and, and other things like that. So, you know, the, he, Mr. Alcorn is well-prepared for this, and he has put in the work. Like you said, we've asked him to do it and to, to turn around now and tell him, "Sorry, we don't need you." That just leaves a bad taste in everybody's mouth, so, but thank you.
But, and before, Nancy Sue, you go ahead, but on your way up there, I'm going to just say-
What is this?
I want to keep, she gets, she hasn't talked all day, and I, I always miss it when Nancy Sue doesn't get it. Anyway, I hope that these two people that have applied for Central County would stay, will be in touch with them. Can I say that, Anthony? And say, "Definitely for next year. We would definitely want to put one of these two, or even open it up again for more, but thank you, and Nancy Sue Rose."
Well, I think, Boyce, what you're forgetting is that there's, okay, so we have two people from South who have been asked, and that now we have two people from Central? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, but the whole thing is that there is nobody from North, so for you to say we can't have-
Hell, we got one.
Oh, you got one?
Yep.
But isn't there three?
Yep. So we have two from Brookings and one from Port Orford.
We, we could, we, I think we're in agreement here, that we're not going to move on this.
Yeah.
So what, why do we?
So are you, are you clear?
I, I thought he said there was two from Central.
No. Well, there's two, new, new applicants, yeah, that, and we appreciate them doing that, and we're going to break for lunch. We'll be back here at 1:15.
Would you line out where, where we're going to start, please?
We're going to start with Commissioner updates, and then we'll go to, is there executive session prior to 3 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Then we'll go to executive session.
Council Pope, I need to see for just a sec. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Eric. Hey, welcome back. We're back in session, and I, Melvin, Commissioner updates. Commissioner Pass, Pash is first, it says.
Uh, I would like to thank the Port Orford Papers. They put a nice advertisement in for our code enforcement, and, oops, sorry. You can't hear my big mouth, huh? Wow. Uh, I, again, like to thank the Port Orford Papers for putting a nice thing in the papers for code enforcement about our dog-in critter licenses that we're going to be asking the citizens to comply with. Very nice little ad that Mr. Trover came up with. It's informational. There's actually two papers there, Mel. Other than that, I don't have a lot, other than I hope the entire community is praying for this nation that's being attacked. I, I'm just shocked by what is happening, and I am inspired by the bravery of the citizens there. Last night, they were showing videos, over 20,000 men have come back across the border from other countries to fight for Ukraine. And that is, that's what this nation's founded on, and I just admire them for doing it. I, I've just seen so many videos from citizens there, and I'm glad to see it, and I hope the UN and this nation does not stop with sanctions and, and other things that we can do to thwart what is happening there. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In recognition of the war in Ukraine and the tyranny of the socialist government, my gosh, of Russia. To add to Mr. Commissioner Pash's comments, there's a 76-year-old grandmother that took up arms, fairly good health, and her quote was, "If I do this now, maybe one of my grandkids won't die tomorrow or years from now." And incredibly impactful, you heard me say this morning, 600 people have been killed there so far. Most of those are women and kids. We can't comprehend how lucky we are to live in this country and not have to deal with that kind of oppression. Camera here, this is a last report from Douglas County on the COVID pandemic, and I'm a little bit sad. It's not that I think Douglas County is better than Curry County, but I can say that they are incredibly well-managed, and to get their reports on a, originally it was a daily basis, the last two or three months have been on a monthly basis, and so they, their medical system, and that comes back, I'm sorry, that comes back to his number-two priority after force management, Commissioner Freeman from Roseburg, Douglas County, is, is medical improvement for his, for his citizens, and yeah, I greatly admire that. A week ago yesterday, or excuse me, a week ago Sunday, I spent two hours at the Coal Rivers Fish Hatchery with Senator Cliff Bence, and two Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife representatives, Jackson County Commissioner Dave Dottler, and I took a whole bunch of pictures. And the electricity issue on Coal Rivers is just mind-boggling, the level of almost indifference that the US Army Corps of Engineers has in their responsibility to that hatchery. I learned a great deal. Congressman Bence was actually very knowledgeable. You heard Commissioner Freeman from Douglas County say he served in legislature with him, and I got to know him back in those days in 2010 and 11. So we're very lucky to have him in Oregon's 2nd District, but Jackson County, one of the three Rob Basin counties, is within his district. And so he and two of his people could not have been taking more notes. Also, there's two representatives from the Kokeel Tribe, and Matt Hill from Douglas County Timber Operators, all about watersheds, all about better management. So Steve Byerlin, our Curry County Sammler Steelhead Recovery Coordinator, and I are going to give a report, presentation, so he can keep me in line, make sure I've got my information right. I did take a lot of notes, and again, it was just a tremendous learning opportunity, and I'll be relying on Steve to help fill in the blanks. He's been there before. I haven't been there for many years.
He was with you on that?
No, no, he was not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, thank you for, let me clarify that. Let's see.
I grew up there for a little bit.
You know, I know, I knew you knew the Lost Creek Reservoir, you, you were quite the water skier, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, we lived right there. Dad was superintendent on that fish hatchery.
So this is, and this will sound a little bit silly at first, but maybe silly, I don't know, but what Commissioner Pash just mentioned there, where our country is headed, this is National Poverty Month, and the reason I wanted to mention this, and yes, it's, it's a little bit of a negative, but it's also an opportunity to be aware. I, I see the spending in our county, and I hear all the time that it's not a spending problem, it's a revenue problem, and I, I just, I just made it clear, I disagree with that. And the reason I bring that up, because at the state level, it's a little bit worse, and at the federal level, it's way worse, to where we have a $30 trillion deficit right now. And history would teach us, I think, it's fairly safe to say that the consequences for that and our children, it's not a good scenario. So stay tuned. If, if we had time, I would spend more time on why this is recognized this particular month and what it means to our generations. I would do that, but not today. I really was thankful to Rock McVeigh and Tim Freeman for offering their time today, and the work that they're doing, and the importance that is to Curry County funding, all county funding. We still have a lot of USDA, and especially USDA and US Economic Development. There's so much money out there. I still think in our ARP, and if you want me to, I'll bring that up again, for the 16th or the 6th, whatever the board prefers, and we'll just start fine-tuning this a little bit on the other 900,000 that we have remaining for this biennium. And I, I hope there's a grant writer in there. Now, I did have a long talk with Cuscurry Douglas Business Development Executive Director Teresa Haga, introduced her to several people here in the office yesterday, and they have got one grant writer that they can, you know, they can go between the three counties, but they're, they're looking for a second one. And so that might be finally an answer for Curry County. I don't know if we want to have our own at some point. That's something I've lobbied this and previous boards for pretty hard, but I get this stuff come across my desk. I don't have time nor the expertise to deal with a grant and I, and the grant applications, but I know this county's lost a lot of money. We talked about we need additional revenue, and we have dropped the ball there, and that, that's, that's a bit of frustration for me. Next week, we will have HBOT, hyperbaric oxygen treatment update, so that we can get the proper information in. It just happens to be up on the screen there with the, I want to say invoice for lack of a better term, but if we're, if, if that project, and the 25% of the cost of the, of the equipment, if, if we're the holdup, then we can, we can remedy that. Oh, we'll have a jail courthouse update as well on 3/16. Things are moving good there. I'm not saying that financially they're moving good, but I don't have bad news on that either. End of April, we're going to have a food forum for Curry County, and that's going to pull in a lot of people, and, and I'll give you more information on that later on. I'm still going to be lobbying this board heavily for the AOC water program, and if AOC isn't the right act, of course, I think it is. If that's not the, the, the choice of this board, then I don't want to lose any more time on coming in with water planning, and I've got some other people now involved that want to help and understand the importance of that. I mean, it's just, without water and good planning, there's not a lot you can do. And you want to start with housing, that's, that's a perfect example, all of our, all of our fish restoration work that we're doing. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I appreciate both of your guys' updates, and I'm glad to hear that, I, I do want to hear, again, from the Water AOC.
Okay.
Just AOC? Not CC, because that's the timber guys, right?
Association of Oregon Counties, and that is Smith and Fulbright is, they're the two people that tuned in two or three meetings ago and made a presentation to the board. They got a soft spot for Curry County, and they'll help, and we've, but we've already lost some, some vital time there, and so I think we can make that up, and I think they're the people to, to help us with that. As I mentioned earlier, it's 1% of the total first-year budget, you know, 25,000, and so I'll be anxious to give the board additional reasons why I think that is quite legitimate and good business. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet, and I definitely want to hear from them again, and I think both of you guys have received information on harbor waters, proposal for a study, or, you know, just a fix for the harbor water issues that they have in, in the end of the summer every year with high tides and-
Go brown water, yeah.
And, and brackish water. Speaking of that gentleman, it's, Daniel Frazier, I think is his name, local guy, and, and we both agreed that what we've seen with the Chetco River is that it wasn't an issue years ago, because it-
Because of watershed.
Watershed and mining, you know, taking the rock out, Freeman Rock, and tide water, and keep that water, that, that river flushed out, and when you don't do that, then it fills in, and the water, the tide tides come higher, and it gets into their intake there, and then you have salty water. And even though he's a, his dad was a commercial fisherman, he says, "I don't like salty water, no, who does?" And spend a lot of time in the ocean myself, and, and too much of it'll make you erp, so, yeah, that'll be a good, just want to reiterate, like you, you gentlemen, on the, what's happening in Ukraine, and my thoughts and prayers for that country, and so when I look at that, and then, you know, and I see what's going on in Curry County, I just, I just, you know, I want to just address a couple of issues. Last couple of meetings, we've had some issues with interdepartmental issues and personal stuff, and, and, you know, I, I relate it to, as a father, when you have kids and they fight when they're little, you know, not that bad, because they get over it, right? They get over it, and the next day or next hour, they're playing together. But, and I haven't been here long, but I still feel like this is part of family now, and so when I am witness to and involved with departments and, and folks that I respect and, and know very well, it hurts, because it's like you're grown children, when, it's different when your children are grown and they, they fight, they don't forget it as easy, and they don't play, they don't go play in an hour. And so we just have to remember that, and, and, you know, you hear stuff, and, and it breaks my heart, and it's easy to break mine, because I'm just a 65-year-old man on man, in, in manopause, so just wanted to share that, and, and right, wrong, or indifferent, we have to respect one another's rights and roles and responsibilities, and treat others like you'd like to be treated. Philippians says, "Do not merely look out for your own personal interests, but also for the interests of others." Easier said than done, and I'm by no means, without fault here, I, you know, got, lost my temper a few times, and, and, but there's no excuse for bad manners. That was one of my mom's favorite sayings before she passed away, and so just had that to add. We're, we're going to go now into executive session.
Kind of just a point and clarification.
Sure.
That was about employee- Kind of disappointing clarification. That was about, uh, employee and not commissioners, right?
It's, it's everybody. It's all of us.
Because there hasn't been any between, until today, there hasn't been any between Commissioner Pash and I for really quite some time, maybe even a year. Not publicly, anyway, so, um, I just want the public to know, I think that was with a couple of employees that we, we love dearly, and, uh, as you well-stated, unfortunate.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's all of us. So Nancy Sue Rose is leading the, the troop, because we're gonna kick everybody out, go into executive session. I don't need to read anything, because there's no, uh, media here, and Melvin, we'll have you back in at 2?
You'll be ready at 2?
Well?
Yeah.
Close, yeah.
2:00.
Yeah.
We, we almost have to be.
Yeah, because we told you we, we'd have it at 2.
Could you reach out to, um, Smith or, I don't know.
You can pull that door, please, Mel.
You can pull that. All right, thank you, folks, for coming back on. We are, uh, done with executive session, and we have directed staff to work as directed. Um, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, Eric.